Hello?
I can hear you, Alicia.
All right, I can hear you.
I don't know if the council chambers can hear us.
I don't think so. Erin and Matt haven't looked up dad joke.
They can hear us.
No.
Oh, oh, no, maybe they didn't.
Matt didn't raise his head when I said dad.
We can hear you.
Wait, who's we? Can Matt hear us because I'm giving some love?
We means everybody.
Everybody, 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 everybody. Yeah, get this energy now because it's um eight o'clock here on in in beautiful Tampa, Florida. Are you okay, Naria? Why are you not in there?
Uh, I have been asked to stay off my knee for another week.
For all of the um all of them for the council and the planning board?
We are making it work with some of us gone and and virtual, I think it's working.
All right. While we hate while we wait, Naria, I sent you an email. We've had I've had some incredible conversation that a great session on immigration. Um, I look forward to talking with you and our council colleagues and it was just really powerful. I still can't hear the council room, though. The chambers.
I think they have us muted until the meeting starts.
Oh, okay. What do you think?
All right, for a little levity to start the night. How do ghosts stay in shape? They exercise. All right, Alicia, do we have channel eight ready?
Yes, sir, we are ready to go.
Okay, I'm gonna give other people one half second here to sit down. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and gavel us in and get started on this Thursday, November fourteen, twenty twenty four, special meeting of the Boulder City Council. And it is especially special because this is a joint meeting with the planning board. So I want to extend a warm welcome to our planning board members here as they join us and give them an extra thank you because this is their second meeting of the week. They had a full meeting on Tuesday night as well. How long how late did that meeting go? Eleven? Okay. We promised to get you out of here sooner than that tonight. Okay, right. So I'll note that this joint meeting is only being held for item three A. Um, and after that, the planning board will adjourn and leave the meeting at the at the conclusion of that item. So you really will get out of here before eleven. So if we can go ahead and have a roll call, please, Alicia.
Thank you, sir, and again, welcome to our fellow planning board members. We'll start tonight's roll call as usual with council member Adams.
Present.
Benjamin.
Present.
Mayor Brockett.
Present.
Council member Focus is absent. Council member Marquess.
Present.
Shoe Hard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Spears absent. Council member Wallack.
Uh, here.
Ann Weiner.
Present.
Mayor, we have our call.
Fantastic. And then I will turn things over to Planning Board Chair George Boone. If you would like to call the planning board to order, please.
Thank you, and I think Thomas is gonna call us to order, is that correct? Uh, through do a roll call, so thank you, Mayor Brockett. Um, we'd like to call to order the planning board meeting tonight, November fourteenth, for the purpose of holding a joint public hearing with city council to consider a motion to find um that there is interest in considering a service expansion. Are we are we doing this right now or are we doing that when we get to number three?
Uh, well, I was just going to invite you to do a take a roll call before I had Alicia announce it. But Alicia, would you like to announce the item first before we do that planning board roll call?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
We will announce the planning board roll call, which is item, I mean, planning board joint meeting item, which is item number three on our agenda tonight under public hearings. Three A is the joint public hearing with the planning board to consider a motion to find that there is interest in considering a service area expansion into the area three planning reserve as part of the twenty twenty five major update to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Please be advised that this is a public hearing only and no deliberations will be held.
Thanks, Alicia. George, you want to continue?
Um, sure, so uh, we'll go ahead and do our planning board roll call. M L Robles.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Laura.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
Kurt.
Here.
Claudia.
Here.
And George Boone, I'm also here. All right, um, I think I pass it back over to you, correct?
Yes, please. Thank you, George, I appreciate it. Um, so before we get into the meat of the item, just a couple housekeeping notes. I will note that the microphones are sensitive and can get some feedback going with so many of us here. So if you're not actively speaking, if you can turn your microphone off, please, I'd appreciate it. And then I'll just note that um on this item tonight, um, this is strictly a presentation by city staff and then questions by council and planning board, followed by a public hearing. At that time, we will uh each continue the meeting and return to our next meeting to do deliberations and make a decision. So no decisions tonight, but just um questions and public hearing. And with that in mind, I will go ahead and turn it over to our city staff to get things going.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Uh, and I'm sorry, I am not there in person to be with you. Mobility issues keep me at home, but uh so happy that you're able to be there in person. Uh, tonight's item, I'm gonna send it over to our Director of Planning and Development Services, Brad Mueller, to kick us off. Brad?
Thank you so much, Naria. Uh, I'm Brad Mueller, I'm the Director of Planning and Development Services. And what a delight to see the two groups come to even together this evening. Thank you for your time and energy around that. Uh, we have been talking about and alluding to the community needs aspect of the planning area reserve, area three, uh, for quite some time, ever since council identified uh this series of um steps as part of a council priority a couple years ago. Well, we are here this evening to not determine have you determined community need, but rather to uh decide whether or not to authorize staff to begin to do the background uh needed so that you could make a decision approximately a year from now about whether there is a need to go ahead and uh take the steps necessary to urbanize area three. So thank you for your time this evening. Uh, I believe we're gonna start with Christopher Johnson, who's the senior manager for comprehensive uh planning.
Thank you, Brad. Good evening, council and planning board members. I'm going to immediately turn it over to uh my colleague, to my right senior planner, Sarah Horn, and she will kick us off tonight.
Hello, city council and planning board members. As KJ mentioned, I'm Sarah Horn, Senior Planner on the Comprehensive Planning Team. As you know, I'm joined by Brad behind me, Christopher Johnson to my left, Chris Brewer to his left, who is one of our um colleagues and um consultants from AECom. We have Deanna Weber behind me in the audience from AECom. And we're also joined by colleagues from various um city departments um who have been helping us with this process, and they've been instrumental in getting us to this point. We couldn't do this without them.
Sarah, do you mind scooting that microphone a little closer to you?
Sure.
Great.
Is that better?
That is.
Okay. Okay, and as I mentioned, we're here tonight to continue the conversation around the area three planning reserve. Council and planning board must decide if you're interested in considering a service area expansion into the area three planning reserve as part of the BVCP update that the comprehensive planning staff is currently working on. Following this evening's joint public hearing, each body will consider a motion to continue their respective hearings to next week, November nineteenth for planning board and November twenty first for council. During next week's meetings, both of you will deliberate and vote on authorization of step two of the service area expansion process, the community needs study. And just as a quick reminder and to orient everyone to the location we're discussing, the area three planning reserve is located just to the north of the majority of the city's existing service area, which is the pale yellow and light gray on the map on the slide. The reserve, which is highlighted with the pink location icon, um is located just north of US thirty six and is approximately four hundred and ninety-three acres in size. And of that four hundred and ninety-three acres, the city owns approximately two hundred and twenty of those acres, almost two hundred and seventy are privately owned, and the US Forest Service owns approximately five acres. There are three items in our agenda tonight. First, our consultants AECom will give a brief summary of the urban services study, um the key insights of that study. Then KJ will cover the area three planning reserve um expansion process um and procedures. And finally, I'll explain how we're planning to incorporate steps two and three of the expansion process into the BVCP update. Um, and then I'll talk about immediate that next steps for both bodies. So before AECom reviews the key insights from the urban services study, I just want to remind everyone where we are now. You can see the three steps of the expansion process outlined on this slide. Step one, which includes the urban services study, um was a report considering current infrastructure capacity and potential on and off-site infrastructure costs and impacts. The report was accepted by council on November seventh, um so step one is now complete. Um, council and planning board, you're both now at a decision point. According to the BVCP, after acceptance of the study, at the beginning of a BVCP update, you must hold a public hearing to determine whether a service area expansion should be considered during the BVCP update, which is what we're doing right now. That's your focus tonight. Based on your decisions next week, we may move to step two of the expansion process. The discussion that is before you tonight is not about the design or use of the planning reserve, which would be further analyzed and discussed during step three on the right side of the slide if both bodies choose to move forward with that step in the future. The focus of tonight is simply whether you are interested in proceeding with a study of community needs. Although step one is complete, we want to again share some of the urban service studies key insights to provide context to help you with your decision about moving to step two. So with that, I'll now pass it to Chris to share some of those insights.
Uh, Sarah, thank you very much. For the record, my name is Chris Brewer. Uh, I've been with AECom for thirty years. I am an economist. I usually find that I have to apologize in advance for that, but just getting that out of the way. Um, we've had a very clear set of conversations and discussions in the last eight weeks based on feedback from both of you, obviously significant conversations with city staff, to cut through any confusion and be as clear as possible about what are the clear policy choices we're trying to drive towards. But also acknowledging that there are things, there's a sequence of events that have to happen to fully unlock area three, and that's going to take some time. So I think statement one is clear enough. There are fundamentally a set of off-site improvements to water and wastewater treatment systems, to distribution pipe systems that fundamentally have to happen for area three to develop.
Chris, do you mind moving the mic in a little bit?
I think the good news is that your existing CIPs already have projects which allow the conversation to happen, meaning you're already thinking about projects that are putting you on a path to make area three developable. So the real question is, in the next six to twelve months, how do those priorities shift? Again, money is always a constraint. But whether that means this happens in five years or ten years, you now have the the opportunity to make those choices concretely about how to move forward. And I would also stress, just based understanding of how the city has done these things in the past, while a share of these costs would be new to the city, you do have impact fees and ways of collecting new revenue to fund and offset some of these costs. So again, you have some flexibility in terms of making those choices. But again, this is the big driver of development of area three is unlocking the off-site improvements. Fundamentally, as we've gone through the process, it's very easy to speculate about what happens on area three. And we've obviously presented to you in the past different scenarios for housing units, anywhere from four thousand to eight thousand housing units on the site. But it really hit home for me when I thought about just appreciation and home values in Boulder from about what, under half a million, ten years ago, to just under a million now, again, five percent annual growth. Um, just thinking for area three, that home price or that apartment rent, five to ten years in the future, is it something like six hundred thousand, is it something around a million, is it a million three? Those are very different numbers, so it's a very difficult dynamic to forecast, particularly five to ten years in the future. But that being said, what we really want to do is de-risk conversation. So what choices can we make to clarify things that we understand easily and clearly and allow us to begin to make those incremental steps? So again, how do we think incrementally about unlocking this area without exposing us to risk? The regulatory process, we know, is going to create the risk of speculation. And we think speculation is ultimately a challenge because it could potentially get in the way of some of your policy goals. Again, sustainability, uh, energy efficiency, affordability, these are all things you've talked about consistently. And we know they're important to the project. So therefore, understanding how we handle the regulatory process, how we interact with property owners. Um, speculation is something we have to pay attention to because it will start to unfold. But last but not least, you're in a unique position, city owns half the property. And that means you get to influence the process and think carefully and pragmatically about how it could be unlocked if you choose to move forward in the coming weeks. Um, we say that point because it's a pretty quiet place today. Um, fragmented ownership, a small number of property owners. Um, the running theory is the prairie dogs are more organized at this point. But we're at the beginning of a process and thinking about those steps really is what we want to get through today. So as we go to the next slide. Uh, again, onsite improvements, again, a lot of debate about these costs, I'll be very transparent here. These are fundamentally onsite infrastructure costs, so streets, sidewalks, streetlights, curb and gutter. In our view, a future developer is going to be responsible through for the majority of these costs. Again, that could be through their direct participation in the project, it could be through collected impact fees. The policy decision you will eventually have to contend with is if you insist on above standard infrastructure, so better than current best practice, let's say we're talking microgrids, additional green infrastructure. There's a possibility that you might have to help support some of those costs. But again, our view at this point is that the majority of these costs will be borne by the private sector as the project develops. Want to be clear about that. We'll go to the next slide. So this is probably the number that has gotten most everyone concerned. We would stress that it is a range and it reflects the fact that you have choices. And you have today, again, within your CIP, a number of projects that are already beginning to help unlock the potential path forward for area three, but the point is you've choices in terms of how area three ultimately develops. And you can begin to have that conversation in the coming months to begin to make practical choices to decide if you can in fact afford to unlock area three. Last but not least, with parks, we'll go to that now. Uh, I I think the thing I would stress about parks is not the idea of the cost of a regional park. It's that you ultimately have a choice between using the acreage you own to either deliver and maintain urban parks. You have a performance metric for maintaining open space per capita. So you have a choice to use the parkland to achieve that. Or you can choose to take that land and use it for affordable housing. That's really the choice you have. I think if we think about purely the idea of the regional park, that's a lower priority item versus the idea of, well, we either need to use this land for affordable housing or we need to preserve it for parks. That's really the choice you have, and you don't have to make that choice today. So last but not least, a lot of talk about ongoing revenues and expenses. Um, and again, we were on the call when we were talking about the Julian, and I always know developers, they tend to overestimate revenues and underestimate costs. It's the way it is. Uh, in our world, actually, when we think about our operating costs from a city standpoint, so police fire, city operating expenses, as a general rule, most of the city's costs are fixed. Okay, on an annual basis, you have a certain number of residents, your costs are relatively fixed. They shouldn't change that much relative to population, which means on average, if we add ten to fifteen thousand residents in area three, your marginal cost of each new resident should in fact go down. So our view is that these operating costs are actually a little conservative. Like, again, the marginal cost should decrease, all things being equal. Now, on the revenue side, it's actually a challenge to forecast. Again, are we talking houses worth six hundred thousand, houses worth nine hundred thousand, houses worth a million two? Huge variability in terms of property tax potentials. But the really interesting one is sales tax. So again, if we were in twenty fifteen, we would have focused on sales tax performance from retail space, and that would have driven your sales tax potentials. We're now in a world with e-commerce where the vast majority of your sales tax could actually be captured at home, which means your change in resident numbers directly influences your sales tax potentials. And we had a number of conversations with city finance staff that were actually initially concerned about how aggressive the numbers were. And we had a long conversation about what the appropriate assumption was to be conservative. But it is a number that is in fact quite volatile and could actually be higher than what we're thinking at this point. The bottom line from our perspective is that on an operating basis, um, again, if we're adding densities at, you know, forty to fifty units per acre, again, one of the scenarios, that should in fact be revenue positive on an operating basis. I would be surprised if it wasn't. Um, the key thing for us is just how long the process takes. And again, you do control that process from a CIP standpoint.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, I'm gonna move on to the next section of the presentation, which is really intended to provide all of you an overview of the overall uh service area expansion process. I want to make sure everybody has a common understanding of not only where we are currently, but also what those future steps look like. So the service area expansion procedure is explicitly described in Exhibit B of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Uh, it includes three steps that Sarah went over briefly at the beginning of the presentation. They're detailed again here on this slide. Uh, step one is to prepare that urban services study, which is now complete, uh, and studies the feasibility and costs of expansion. This helps to answer the question of could expansion occur? Step two is to evaluate community needs and whether they would require an expansion in order to be met. This is intended to answer the question of should expansion occur? And then finally, step three is to prepare an urban ser- or sorry, a service area expansion plan, which is really where you start to break out the colors and the markers and start drawing on a piece of paper to develop the vision, the land use plan, and the policies for expansion. This is intended to answer the question of how expansion could occur in the future. You can also think of this in terms of step one as unlocking the door to the planning reserve. Step two opens the door, and then step three is you walking through the door. Uh, it's really important for council and planning board to understand that the process that has been developed and that is outlined in the Comprehensive Plan related to expansion is is very intentionally sequential and multi-stepped. It's really there to ensure that the potential community benefits outweigh the possible negative impacts and that the city ultimately expands in a logical and measured manner. Accordingly, each one of these steps has a specific level of detail and also certain limitations as to what is relevant and appropriate to be discussed at that moment. Step one, the urban services study does not make any recommendations on policy. It is really just provide uh intended to provide an initial estimate of feasibility and the costs and serves as a foundation for future conversations. Step two is when uh the community needs study is when the community and staff and policymakers begin to weigh the possible benefits and costs of expansion. This step is intentionally integrated with and then initiated at the beginning of a Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan update in order to put the planning reserve into the context of the rest of the city's priorities and values. It will lead to an evaluation that weighs the trade-offs of expansion in relation to other approaches to address those identified needs. And finally, step three, the service area expansion plan would establish the detailed vision and plan for the area. This is roughly equivalent to a sub-community plan and would define the land use plan, the mobility network, and the policies that will guide future annexation agreements and development uh in in terms of uh topics, including affordable housing, parks and open space, and the expectations of developers in the future. Next slide. One final note uh here is just to reinforce the fact that you all have the ability to press pause at any moment throughout this process. Uh, as we discussed earlier, uh, in Chris's section, the off-site infrastructure improvements are likely going to be the driving uh critical path, driving force in terms of the timing for substantial development to occur and not necessarily the planning process itself. So there may actually be some strategic reasons in the future to pause while those infrastructure discussions and decisions are made uh before moving forward. However, if you do wish to proceed, uh, the current comp plan procedures that guide service area expansion are laid out uh in an extended calendar that might look something like this. So the community needs study would occur concurrent with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan update, as Sarah will be describing shortly. And then at the end of the needs study, if there is a sufficient priority need that is identified to warrant the preparation of a service area expansion plan, that process would begin soon after the adoption of the BVCP update in mid twenty twenty six. Now, I want to point out the initiation of a service area expansion plan is a city decision. The expansion plan then, as I mentioned, is equivalent in scope and complexity to a to a sub-community plan, so we expect it would probably take approximately eighteen months to complete. And then the approval of the expansion plan and the change from area three planning reserve to area two is both a city and county decision. Per the procedures that are found in Exhibit B of the comp plan, uh, changes from area three to area two can only occur during a midterm or major update. So that means that even if the expansion plan uh were completed earlier than that, the actual change from area three to two uh could not occur until the twenty thirty midterm update. That's based on the current procedures. I will highlight that it is important for you to recognize that during a major update of the comp plan, which is what we are uh beginning now, everything is open to revision and reconsideration. So that means that the procedures around the change from area three to area two could be modified to allow for a change to occur sometime outside of a midterm or a major update and concurrent with the approval of an expansion plan. That is a procedural change that could be considered and made as part of the comp plan update to be completed in mid twenty twenty six. And at that point, uh, I'm gonna pass it off to, oh, actually, I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna let Brad jump in for just a minute.
Just a just an adjunct to the uh comment on this slide that Christopher is making about the procedural change from area three to area two. Uh, a related but separate question has come up more recently about the timing need of for that under the current procedures from the Comprehensive Plan. Uh, that is a question that we're gonna explore in more detail before next week, so we won't be able to answer that today, but we will, we will have that subsequently. but we will, we will have that subsequently answered for you. Thank you.
Take it away, Sarah.
Okay, thanks, KJ, and thank you, Brad. Okay, so, um, KJ alluded to what I will be talking about, which is, um, the approach for step two. If you choose to move forward. If both of you vote to authorize the community needs assessment, um, staff's preliminary approach to continue exploring a service area expansion through the BVCP update process would follow the timeline you see on the screen. We anticipate starting the process, um, in early twenty twenty-five and then finishing in early twenty twenty-six. Based on the subject matter that needs to be covered during step two of the service area expansion process, which is community need, staff have plugged the consideration of expansion, as KJ mentioned, into the BVCP update. This will help us deliver a comprehensive process that considers the entire Boulder Valley context to ensure that the expansion process, if it moves forward, isn't completed in a vacuum. And so other alternatives to meet priority community needs might be considered. So now I'll go over the preliminary approach, um, to the process, I'll go over more detail. Sorry, okay. Oh, well, yeah, and then I just wanna mention for this one, um, that we're integrating it with the BVCP process, as you can see, and we would start, um, to, um, weave it in, um, in Phase Two of the BVCP update. Okay, so, the first step of the community needs study, um, from January to March of twenty twenty-five, staff would focus on a community engagement related to community needs. Um, we would use existing conditions data that we're collecting right now to identify preliminary unmet needs. And then we would engage the community through vision, values, and focus area activities, um, to discuss preliminary needs identified by staff, to add new needs brought forward by community members, and to prioritize the most critical needs. And then next, from April to May of twenty twenty-five, staff would begin a preliminary analysis of needs to determine if priority community needs could be reasonably addressed within the current service area through policy adjustments or enhanced infrastructure, um, and also if needs could be addressed through the planning reserve. If that is the case, staff would include a service area expansion as an option in the draft policy framework to be further explored through detailed analysis in the next step. During this next step, taking place from June through October of twenty twenty-five, staff would perform an analysis of service area expansion. This would involve an analysis of suri- service area expansion as a possible solution to priority community needs alongside alternative or additional options, um, that maintain the existing service area. Um, we would also engage with the community to explore various policies and tools to meet community needs, including the service area expansion. We would also weigh, as KJ mentioned earlier, possible trade-offs of these alternatives. And if service area expansion appears to be a viable alternative based on community feedback, staff would begin to prepare analysis of the service area expansion. The final task for the community needs study or step two would occur from November of twenty twenty-five to February of twenty twenty-six. It would involve planning board and council making a determination about moving to step three, the service area expansion plan. At this point, staff would refer, would refer unmet priority community needs to Boulder County for review. Then, um, both bodies, planning board and city council, would hold public hearings to determine if the unmet needs are of sufficient priority to warrant a service area expansion plan. This would likely happen in December of twenty twenty-five or January of twenty twenty-six. The determination to move to step three would be based on meeting three criteria that are outlined in the comprehensive plan, which I'll discuss in more detail on the next slide. If needs are determined to be of sufficient priority to expand, staff would develop policies related to this, um, and they would be incorporated into the draft BVCP update. The service area expansion plan would be prepared after completion and adoption of the BVCP update, which is anticipated to be late summer or early fall of twenty twenty-six. And then, as I mentioned just a minute ago, the criteria that you, you, both bodies will use at the end of step two to evaluate whether or not to move to step three include community value. That expansion will address a long-term community value as articulated in the comprehensive plan. The second is capacity. The need for a service area expansion cannot be met within the existing service area because there is not suitable existing or potential land or service capacity. And the third criteria benefit. Expansion will benefit existing residents in the Boulder Valley and will have a lasting benefit for future generations. Now that we've covered what step two might look like, and all of our brains are full of all things service area expansion, I'll quickly go over immediate next steps. You're now at a decision point, as KJ mentioned earlier. You will vote next week on whether or not to move forward with step two of the service area expansion process, the community needs study. To drill down a bit more on the impact of this decision, the diagram on this slide outlines the outcome of voting yes or no. Tonight, as you can see with number one on the slide, we're hosting, um, the required public hearing to determine interest in considering expansion as part of the BVCP update. Number two and three focus on next week's meetings. Planning board will deliberate and vote on your interest, um, at the continued hearing on the nineteenth. And city council, you'll deliberate and vote on your interest at your continued hearing on November twenty-first. If one or both bodies do not approve such interest, the process will pause, as KJ mentioned, which you can see here with the yellow pause button. The next time service area expansion, as KJ also mentioned, can be considered is at the next update, which is twenty thirty. If the community need study is authorized, staff will move to number four on the slide, incorporating a planning effort into the BVCP process to solicit and identify priority community needs. This will be considered the initiation of step two of the service area expansion process. Okay, and so finally, the question you are considering tonight and next week is, is there interest in considering a service area expansion plan, a service, excuse me, a service area expansion into the Area Three Planning Reserve as part of the update to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan? Following this evening's hearing, each body will continue a mo- consider a motion to continue their respective hearings to deliberate and vote on authorization of the community needs study. And just a quick note before I turn it back over to you. The hearing is open for couple- public comment tonight, but no additional testimony will be taking, taken on this subject at the continued hearing next week. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Brock.
Thanks so much, Sarah, and others, uh, for that excellent and edifying presentation. Uh, it is a little complicated, our heads are now stuffed with all of the steps, but I think we've, we've got it since it was explained so well. So, uh, this is now a chance for council and planning board to ask any questions. We got a lot of those in ahead of time, really appreciate those of you who submitted those, and staff for jumping right on them and answering those complicated questions. If anyone has any further questions, uh, that are relevant to our decision about whether to start the needs analysis, please raise your hand, and you can get those answered tonight. Claudia, Tina?
I have several questions, and they're not really in order, so please bear with me. The first is, what current CIP projects, um, do we have scheduled that are relevant to this question of expansion, either in the sense that they would be creating, um, needed capacity, or that they are specifically designed to only serve existing needs in the city? So, could somebody please speak to the CIP, what do we have coming up?
Thank you for the question, and just for everyone's awareness, myself and Brad will probably, uh, initially field a lot of the questions and then distribute them out to other subject matter experts as necessary. What I can tell you right now is we do not have a, uh, a, a very specific list of tho- those projects that will take some additional analysis, um, and, and really modeling of the wa- water and wastewater system in particular, uh, to determine exactly which of those projects would have some crossover benefit to the Area Three Planning Reserve. What we do know is that there are a number of projects that are either in the CIP currently or within our longer-term utility system plans that, um, are intended to provide, uh, additional capacity, both for growth, uh, within the, within the current service boundary, East Boulder as an example. That could also, uh, provide some additional capacity in relation to the planning reserve. So unfortunately, we don't have a real specific, uh, number, dollar figure, or specific, uh, exact projects which will provide for that crossover benefit, but it is something that is incorporated, uh, into the thinking here so far.
Follow up on that, is there, is there any way we could get a, a gloss on that topic before we deliberate next week?
I may have to defer to a utilities person if they're... Mr. Joe Tatiucci is coming down to the microphone.
I sensed it wasn't on. Good evening, uh, planning board and council members, Joe Tatiucci, I'm the director of the utilities department. And, um, I'm joined by Chris DuVille, who's our deputy director, uh, of utilities, and Kim Hutton, our water resources manager, so they can, uh, certainly add more detail. But in our capital plans for water and wastewater, um, we have major transmission lines. In the water system, there's the water treatment plants that deliver water to the city. And then there are large diameter, um, kinda trunk lines that bring that to the smaller distribution, uh, system to the that brings water to the homes and businesses. And so we have capital projects across the city for things like that. In the wastewater system, there is the collection system. We're currently doing expansion of capacity to all of the major trunk lines in the, in that wastewater system that will serve the entire city, and some of those trunk lines would help in the, uh, Area Three. Also doing a number of, uh, upgrades at our water treatment plants and our wastewater treatment plants that will, um, meet regula- regulatory requirements and also improve those system processes. So, um, Chris DuVille may have more to add, but in general, I think projects like that, uh, we have a six-year capital plan and, and, uh, Boulder's an older city, so we're constantly upgrading our infrastructure, it's, it's the focus of our department.
Anything else?
I got two more, one of them's quick. I'll do the quick one first, and that is, um, just for context, how many private parcels and owners, um, do we currently have out there in the Area Three Reserve?
That is a great question, I will be able to find that answer for you, so we can continue on and I can, we can come back to that in just a, a few minutes.
Fabulous, thank you. Um, and then my last question has to do, um, with the process for this community needs study as you're starting to think about it. So, um, I consider a study like that to be, um, inherently value-driven in a lot of ways in terms of who gives, who gets to give input, how we evaluate that input. Um, and maybe even more so in this case, because unlike the, the BVCP where we have an existing document, right? This community needs study is essentially starting from more of a blank slate. Could you talk anymore about, um, how you would plan on gathering community input or expert input in order to determine what we actually consider to be a need?
Yeah, it's a great question, so our intent is really to fold the community needs study into the comprehensive plan update. So our, our goal would be to utilize the same engagement strategy to reach voices that we haven't heard of, uh, or heard from traditionally, um, to engage, uh, those individuals so we can hear from them directly, uh, as part, uh, through the comprehensive plan, but also in relation to this notion of need and in particular, the planning reserve. Similar to any subject matter experts, um, we would, we would do the same thing. So really, our goal is not to see this as a separate process, but really just to fold it into the overall comprehensive plan strategy.
And I'll just piggyback again, Brad Mueller, Planning and Development Services, although I wasn't here, and many of us were not, uh, when those procedures were drafted, our working understanding is that that was the intent of requiring that step two, if it be authorized, needs to take place in conjunction with the comprehensive plan update.
Thanks for those questions, Claudia, Tina?
Sure, um, and just actually, uh, following up a little bit on Claudia's questions. Um, the first is when we think about defining the community need and values, do we think about, um, the, like, we've been given a, an estimate of the housing that we need by the Dr. Cog group, and a different housing number presented by the demographer at the BVCP kickoff. Are those numbers that we'll be putting out there as like a community need, or will it be mostly values-driven?
Well, I think, you know, part of the comprehensive plan, the challenge is that it's, it's more art than science, and so we will have a lot of conversations that'll be value-driven and thinking about the policies, then the, really the vision and goals that we have for the city that also then will always be supported by data and analysis. And so it will be a balance between trying to utilize the, the information that is, um, provided to us by, by our regional partners or developed within, and, you know, within our own departments and within our, um, planning, planning team as well, um, but balancing that with the values. So we, you know, we definitely, it's gonna be really difficult to boil this down to a quantitative measure of is there a need or is there not a need, there's gonna be a, 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 really a value and a policy decision that's layered into it, regardless of, of what we determine, so, yes, there'll be interesting, um, and valuable points of information, but, um, will they serve as a very specific threshold? I would, I would say no.
Okay, thanks, and then the second piece is also-
Except I think Brad Mueller would like to have an additional word on that top.
I'll try not to interr- i- i- interrupt too much, but I did wanna elaborate, uh, council member, since you alluded to uh, some of the numbers at the kickoff that were presented by both the state demographer and Dr. Cog, and they were different sets of, uh, projected housing need, uh, in two different contexts. Uh, the Dr. Cog one was in the context of, um, fulfilling, uh, housing goals that have been identified as part of the state, statewide, uh, legislative discussion, and were by definition aspirational in looking at trying to increase density in areas of existing urban development. Whereas, uh, it was clarified to us that the, um, state demographer's data was based on trends and knowledge of demographic change over time. So while they are different numbers, um, they are known to be different, uh, for, for very purposeful reasons. One is a policy-driven one, one is based on historic trends, and, uh, those two groups are talking to each other. But it does illustrate too, uh, many of the points, uh, Christopher was making about this being more art than science, and that's really part of, uh, what's baked into any comprehensive plan update too, is to try to tease out those values.
Thank you so much for clarifying that, and also for posting the, um, demographer session. It is now online on the BVCP website, if anyone else wants to hear about that, and, uh, her description of how we got to those numbers. I really did like that we had some data to think about as a goal we need to achieve to meet the trends that the demographer had described. Um, my second question is just to-
I'm sorry, Tina, before you go on, may I ca- may I colloquy?
Of course, Taysha.
Um, I just wanted to have a follow-up, just curious to know how, um, how many, um, units we already kinda have in the kitty? Just wanted to get reminded of that number.
I assume you, you're referring to how many additional possible units we have already planned for through our existing sub-community plans?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yes, I would say off the top of my head, it is in the neighborhood of probably about eight thousand units total, I think there's approximately, uh, four to five thousand units that were antec- anticipated over a twenty to thirty-year time horizon in the East Boulder SubcommUNITY Plan, another fifteen hundred to two thousand in Boulder Junction Phase Two, and then some additional, um, smaller scale to add a few more hundred in addition to those.
Awesome, thank you so much, and it would be helpful to get that concrete number, but I'm grateful for what you were able to tally off your head, sorry about that, Tina.
No problem. Um, and then the, the second thing is, um, is there a point in this process where we'll understand whether all the parcel owners are interested in developing their land so that we'd have a- a better idea of whether we'd recoup the fixed costs going into it, or whether other developers would pay more to offset the costs that we're putting out to create the service?
I will also maybe lean on my colleague, Chris Brewer, to my left. But initially, and this gives me a great opportunity to answer Planning Member Team's question from before, that the, the total number of private property owners is around 40. There's about 50 or so distinct parcels out there, many of which owned by the city, the federal government. But there's approximately 40 different individual property owners. To your question around, you know, at what time would we sort of understand the level of interest from a redevelopment standpoint? I think that that is going to take some time. I think it's also very, very clear that not everybody is going to be interested in redevelopment. There may, they may have smaller land holdings that, you know, could be assembled into a single project by a, by a third party. So I would say that, you know, as part of the community needs study, that's probably less of an interest. I think we're interested in hearing more about what the values and the needs are of the city overall, but, but certainly we would begin to learn about the developer interest as this process continues to move forward. And Chris, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
You know, in general, in our experience, in these types of situations, you tend to have three different types of property owners. There's a group that they, they know eventually they will sell, but they have no interest in participating in a project. There tends to be a second group that has more lofty expectations of what their land is worth. They might want to participate, they don't necessarily understand how complex the whole process is and how expensive infrastructure is. And then you have a third group that tends to be very sophisticated, very thoughtful, and better able to understand how this will play out.
All right. Those are all the hands I've seen. Last call, Mark.
I'll never miss the opportunity to ask a couple of questions. Can we get more detail before next week's meeting about the implied CIP projects that will have to be foregone in order to do something of this nature?
Well, I, we can attempt to try to identify some of those things, but I actually think a lot of those decisions will be ultimately future conversations around what might possibly, you know, need to be either delayed or reprioritized. So I, you know, it might be difficult for us to at least say which ones would be delayed, but we can certainly try to put together a little bit of a, of a brief list just to identify what those might look like.
As we have a couple of hundred million dollars of projects already backed up and not going to be covered by the CCRS tax, it would be good to know what it is we're going to have to be looking at in terms of postponing. I'm, I'm a little confused about the projections of additional sales tax to offset the, the various costs of, of moving forward. Could we get some more detail about that? In addition, I, I'd like to get some more detail about the timing. It, it seems to me we're going to incur whatever expense is involved first before the homes are built and the real estate taxes and the sales taxes are generated in years thereafter. So we're, we're going to have to come up with quite a piece of change in order to make this happen. And I'd like to get a better understanding of what the actual economics look like over I just don't think it, it nets out that there's 600 here and 600 there, voila, it's zero. It looks to me like it's going to be 600 from us, later 600 recovered, and that's how you get to zero. So if there's some information you can give us as, as to how these things integrate from a timing perspective, that would be very, very helpful. A couple of references were made to maintaining service levels of parks. If someone could explain to me the basis for not including open space in our calculation of how much recreational space is available to our citizens, that would be also very helpful. Because, you know, 200 acres of this parcel are intended for parkland and were purchased to be parkland. But the question is, do they need to be parkland? And next, as you see, I have-
Can I just interrupt you for a second, Mark? Are you asking, you're asking for things for people to get back to us before the deliberation?
Yeah.
So that, good enough. So they'll, they'll come back to us on this.
And of course, I raised a number of issues in a hotline I put out on Monday. I'm, I'm hoping that you guys will respond to some of those, you know, for better or worse. And, and lastly, I, has there been any effort to identify what the goal is here? In other words, is it housing? If it's housing, what kind of housing? Is it market rate housing, which implies one set of economics? If it's affordable and middle-income housing, that implies another set of economics and raises the question of how you're going to get there, given the, the infrastructure costs and, and the other expenses involved in, in doing this. So is it intended to simply get cash and loo or donation of a portion of, of properties to the city so that BHP or some other entity can build on them? How do you navigate that? And what are you looking at in terms of enhancing the affordability of the project, not just the number of units, but the type of units? And that, that should be enough for a week.
Yes, yes, it will be. I, I will, I will offer a, a brief reply to your last question, just that. At this point, we, we have not had that conversation around what is the ultimate goal here and what are the values we're driving for purposefully? We've tried to focus on really the sort of objective data around the feasibility and the costs and the purpose of the community needs study and ultimately a service area expansion plan. That's where we would get into those, those conversations around what is it we are trying to achieve and then how do we do that successfully through policies? So I'll just, I'll leave it at that for tonight.
Thanks. And I'll note that there were a number of answers provided to the hotline as well in that email you all sent out a couple of days ago. So some of that is out there too. Okay, I had Kurt, then Mark, then Laura.
Thank you. Well, you kind of just answered the question that I was going to ask, but Councilmember Waller teed it up very nicely, which is that I feel that there hasn't been this sort of goals, big picture goals discussion. So where, where in this process do you see that happening?
Well, I think that would begin during the community needs discussion. So that's where we would identify a variety of needs. I mean, I think certainly everyone's mind is going to automatically go to housing, but there could be needs like park needs or recreation, you know, other, other kinds of needs in the community, access to food, maybe it's agriculture is a, is a more appropriate use. Like, that's where we will start to tease out the conversations around the values and the needs that we have in the community. Ultimately then, if we go through that process and we determine that there is enough need that we can't meet that within the existing city boundary and we need to consider the expansion, then the service area expansion plan process, as I mentioned, is, is very analogous to a sub-community plan. So as, as I think all of you know from experience, sub-community plans, we, is when we really dig into, and in, in this case with a, essentially a blank slate in a lot of ways, there would be some very, very deep conversations around what does this place look like? What kinds of densities are we looking for? What is the appropriate affordability level? How do we balance that? How much parks and open space and other mobility options and other things do we factor in to make sure that if we expand, we do that in the right way? So I think we'll, we'll begin to have those conversations through the community needs and, and frankly, just as part of the comprehensive plan process. And then ultimately, if we, if we ultimately moved into step three, that's when we would really define that and document it, and then that becomes a tool to guide future annexations and future development going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mark?
At the risk of maybe asking the same question, but I think it's a little different. And this is more for Chris, but anyone can answer it. In step one, and going forward in step two, how do you reconcile the need to use assumptions to come up with calculations? You got to plug in numbers based on current usage patterns of water, of streets, of the way we build things, the patterns in which people live, with a potential vision of an expansion with very, with potentially very different needs and very different use patterns that, as a community, we haven't necessarily provided yet. So, you know, your, your task with creating a, a set of numbers and, but it's really hard to do that with a vision of use and expenditures that's very different from the community that exist on the ground today. Is that?
So several thoughts for you. One, again, being the economist, I have this unfortunate interest in reading lots of city budget files for lots of city budgets across the country, and you see typical patterns. You tend to see water usage per person tending to go down over time because we're investing in efficiency all the time. Again, you see typically that marginal cost of providing services go down, although not always with some services, fire and police tends to go up actually. So you see these patterns and you expect to see them. Again, I think in this case, the real thing is when we do horizontal and vertical development studies for developers, we're working in a timeframe where we know we're going to break ground in three months, six months, 12 months, and you have a relatively predictable connection from current trends to what can then unfold. And then some of it's just up to the developer to generate the appropriate funding, which then triggers all of the infrastructure. And I think in this case, again, over the last six months, but really, to me, it hit home when I saw that home value appreciation in 10 years where we're doubling our home value inside of 10 years, which is a, a specific challenge, where that rate of growth is much harder to predict. Like, what could the next five years look like? You end up with very different outcomes, and I think that's where, for me, it shifted to a fundamental focus on, well, what's our offsite cost? What's that strategy? Is that affordable? And then that takes us very incrementally to, well, what are the property owners thinking about? And then you start to see a logical path forward in my mind.
Okay, just a quick follow-up.
We got a follow-up over here first. If you can introduce yourself, please.
Sure. Deanna Weber with AE Comm. I'm Chris's counterpart, who's the land planner. And to help directly answer your question, when we first started the exercise, we looked at Boulder case studies. We looked at typical building typologies that you already have here in Boulder. We then take a look at extrapolating that to your height limit of 55 feet. So that gives us some bookends or parameters to work with. So it's not just the economist, but it has some smart land planning in there too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. And then just going back to step one, to the urban services study. Scenario D got added in, I, I think based on some Planning Board and, and Council input about wanting to evaluate a, a different vision. And it seems like that scenario D got turned into more units per acre for evaluation. Or did it actually include smaller, narrower streets, less water usage based on shared parks and, and less individual open space and those sorts of things? So did scenario D include that, or was it really, did it kind of get boiled down to more units density?
Yeah, thanks, Mark. We, we actually used scenario B as the baseline and then added the additional 89, 90 acres of parkland to be utilized for housing. So, so overall, it was an increase of units. We, we did not add those units onto scenario C, which was the most intense at the time. We used that sort of middle-of-the-road scenario B as our baseline. But overall, other than, other than that, we made the same assumptions around the amount of smaller neighborhood parks, street widths, other, other things like that that would be incorporated into that scenario.
Great, thank you.
Laura?
I want to thank staff and the consultants for all of the work that you have done. Very complicated subject, and thank you for breaking the process down for us here tonight. I'm, I'm curious what initiated us looking at potentially unlocking the planning reserve. The planning reserve was identified in 1993. It's 30 years later, over 30 years later. Has unlocking the planning reserve been considered by the City of Boulder previously, or is this the first time that we're considering it?
I do not have the benefit of history of, of knowing if or when it has been discussed in the past, but my understanding is that at each beginning, at the beginning of each comprehensive plan update since 1993, there was a brief discussion around, should we tackle the planning reserve? Should we have a conversation around it? At the time, the, the very specific procedures that are in the comprehensive plan currently did not exist. Those were, those were updated and added, I believe, in the 2015 update. So what happened, you know, for 20 years or so was there was a conversation around it, but it was very difficult to ever land on a decision, so it never moved forward. The, the addition of creating the urban services study as the first step, as I say, was added in 2015, and that, that essentially gave, I think, Planning Board and Council a, a much more tangible way to begin the process and begin thinking about it and have the information to be able to have a conversation. And so in, at the 2022 Council Retreat, that urban services study was identified as a city council priority project. And so that's, that's how it was ultimately initiated. It, it, it took us about a year to get the staff capacity and get, get organized in order to be able to, to begin that, so that the project began early, well, essentially at the end of last year, very early this year.
I'll just add to that if I may, because I was on Council in 2015 for the last comprehensive plan update, and as, if memory serves, at that, that time, we decided, okay, we're not going to try to initiate a service area expansion, this comp plan go-around, but we do feel like the process could use some updates and some changes. And so that was what we tackled back 10, what is it now, eight years ago or so, is changes to the process. And so now, this time around, we're saying, well, we have some interest, and then looking at these, the process that we defined back in, what, that we adopted in 2017. If you want to go back much further, I note that former Councilmember and Planning Board member, Makin Coles, is our first speaker tonight. So if you want to ask him a question about the previous 10 or 15 years of history before that, I'm sure he could answer that.
I might, I might. Makin, you might be on the spot. But if I might follow up, so it sounds like this interest in potentially kicking off a planning reserve annexation and service area plan, potentially, if we go that far. It was this city council or a couple of years ago, 2022, that initiated that. Is it appropriate to ask these seated city council members who were there, why, what was your thought of what we might need and why we might want to kick off this integration of the planning reserve?
Appreciate the question, Laura. As, as one of the, you know, few holdouts from, from that council, or holdovers, I should say. My personal reason for supporting that was, you know, if you took a word cloud of the common phrases used at council, you'd come up with housing crisis, climate crisis, and the word colloquy. So, so it was really sort of spawned from, I know Teresa liked that, it was really spawned from like, there was just an urgent need, and we had already gone through that process with CU South, and yet this was sort of the golden egg that was sort of left for this city to decide something to do with. And when we had a housing crisis, I felt that's where we needed to start this process, not knowing what it would ultimately be, but we can't talk about what it can be until we actually go through this. So as, as the sort of metaphor was played out, we had to unlock it before we could have a substantive- Until we actually go through this. So, uh, as, as the sort of metaphor was played out, we had to unlock it before we could have a substantive conversation about its potential. And so we wanted to start that process to pay it forward for our community. That was my justification for, for why to start that process. Thanks for asking.
And may I colloquy?
Only if you say the words affordable housing crisis.
And climate crisis.
I mean, my view at the time was, was to look at this as a resource for affordable housing. Which was what we truly needed. And, uh, I, I will. Am I gonna comment in any depth cuz we're not doing that today, but, you know, the, the scale of the infrastructure cost was unknown to me. And I found it rather surprising, um, but it is what it is. But I viewed it as, here's three hundred acres. Twenty units an acre, um, you can build a lot of affordable and middle income units. It looks like that may be a little more challenging than I had thought.
Good enough. Did you wanna add?
Being one of the other people that was there at the time, it was looked at as because we own that land or part of that land anyway. That it would be le- less expensive to. It would be less expensive housing than normally would be because of that fact, so similar to the airport, actually. Except not the airport.
Let's not say the A word tonight, and other people have, uh, covered it well. Good enough? Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. So, oh wait, Mason, there we go.
Yes, sorry, this is potentially pretty quick. Um, so the community isn't defined in documents as I saw this will. And you said that this will work through the PVC or the Boulder Valley Comp Plan Update. I'm wondering if there will be outreach to people who work in Boulder but don't necessarily live in Boulder Valley to assess their needs.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. We absolutely anticipate trying to capture the voices and hear from people. That are commuters, I being one of them. Um, and, uh, we, so as part of the comprehensive plan update. That is, that is a, a goal of our engagement strategy is not only to reach the people that, that live in Boulder, but also those that may live elsewhere. And work or recreate here, um, or come here to shop, or you know, whatever it might be. I will also just give, uh, you know, a little bit of a, um, preview in that the community assembly that we've been talking about. For the comprehensive plan, that's also an area where we are considering if there is an opportunity to have a role for people. That are not residents of, of Boulder, but to also be able to participate through that process. So we're definitely thinking, I'm trying to think outside the box and capture those voices as well.
Alright, good. And I got Taisha and George, and then Taisha.
Thanks. Um, quick question as it relates to, as this moves forward or doesn't. Is the question would be, um, are you gonna be able to provide feedback relative to other things that might get delayed? Because all of a sudden the focus changes to this, such as area plans and other things that, that might be on the dock.
Yeah, good, good question, so, um, uh, so there, yes, there's potentially some work planning issues. Uh, or questions that would be raised if, if this process moves forward. Particularly related to the third step of the service area expansion plan after the comprehensive plan, that would obviously take precedence. We will also, through the community needs process and just, and sort of built into the, the options analysis for the comp plan. We will be weighing out the, um, you know, the potential costs and benefits of expanding into the planning reserve. Against other possible policy options that could, you know, yield similar amounts of new housing units. Perhaps in other locations of the city and, and trying to weigh, um, you know, weigh the options of. Providing additional density along transit corridors as an example, and the infrastructure that exists there. In comparison to, uh, an expansion into the planning reserve and, and we don't know where. We don't know where that analysis will lead. It may, it may be one or the other. There may be a both and option. It, it's yet to be determined, but, but certainly we'll be trying to weigh out the relative. I guess appropriateness of expansion against other options that we have on the table as part of the comprehensive plan.
Great, uh, Taisha.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I had a question, uh, just two. One is around urban agriculture, and if there had been any considerations around, I know that I saw in the reports. The information around grocery stores, um, and I know that the city owns a thousand acres of land throughout Boulder County. But I was just curious if there had been additional considerations. Or, or collaboration with Colorado Agri, uh, Department of Agriculture to, to better assess. Again, the, the needs beyond, um, but beyond housing, parks, commercial space. Uh, and open space. The second question is around, um, energy. And if there was any plans for energy generation in, um, in that area. Particularly thinking about either agrosolar or solar. Yep, those are my two.
Great, thank you for the questions, council member. Um, we, we did not get into a lot of decisions around. The particular land uses at this time, we, you know, we used a, a fairly traditional assumption around the types of land uses. In the area, again, just to generate a baseline set of costs and, and potential impacts to infrastructure. Again, as part of this community needs discussion and ultimately a future expansion plan, if that's ultimately where we go. We would get into a lot deeper conversations around what is the appropriate, uh, types of land use. And I, I personally think urban agriculture, um, is something that, uh, would be looked on very favorably by the community. And something I think people would be very interested in, particularly if it's integrated in with affordable housing. Um, and other parks and recreation types of uses. I think there's a lot of great opportunities, but, um, we have just not dove into those types of conversations. Just yet. Uh, to your second question around energy generation, uh, similar, I would say a similar response. We, we have not explored that in depth at this time, but certainly, again, we expect that conversations around. The sustainability and the climate resilience of a new neighborhood or a new area of the city. That will be part of the conversation, and we would fully anticipate there will be some conversations around. Innovative and, and creative strategies as it relates to energy, um, uh, not only energy generation, but also energy consumption in the area. So how do we, how do we make this, uh, the most, um, sustainable and sort of energy independent, uh, place as possible?
Thank you so much for that, and I, sorry, I forgot my last question, which was, I appreciated the response to my question about wildfires. As that was not considered in the assessment, uh, in the initial study. However, I actually was talking about the water that is used to fight wildfires. So for example, we know, um, that area reservoirs are often, you are of, often tapped, pun intended. To, to, you know, quell, um, wildfires in our area. So I was just curious if that had been considered, or how that will be considered, recognizing, um, that we. You know, we can anticipate, uh, moderate and severe climate disruptions.
Yeah, another, another great question. Uh, so we, we did not dive into that in a lot of detail at this, at this moment. If this process continues to move forward, we, we know that we will need to continue, um, to do additional analysis. And I think that would tie in with a lot of the consideration of other questions tonight about what are some of the, the true infrastructure upgrades? That are necessary? Which of those are we already planning for and, and, and thinking about? And, and we would incorporate that into, into future, future steps as part of the process.
Okay, and then last of the last, JK, I apparently had more than the two. For the, I forgot it. It is what it is. I'll have multiple opportunities. Thank you.
Great, and feel free to send something via email after the, um, meeting, Taisha. Okay, so I think we've come to the end of our question period, so we are now going to turn to our public to hear from the public in our public hearing. If you could read the public participation guidelines, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Brockett, and again, good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. I'll now go over the public participation at city council meeting guidelines. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council, as well as democracy for people of all ages. Identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, we ask that you please visit our website at boldercolorado.gov. Slash services slash productive dash atmospheres. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. Participants are asked, I'm sorry, participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by. And individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. Only one person at a time at the podium unless an accommodation like an interpreter is required. Our remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No standing in or otherwise blocking the aisles. No participant shall stand or hold items such as signs or flags in a manner that would block the view of another person. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. We ask that you not affix items to the podium or dais or walls or other surfaces of the chambers. Signs, flags, or other items used to communicate must be held by one person when displayed. Obscenity, other epithets based on race, gender, or religion, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the meeting. Will not be tolerated. And lastly, in-person participants are asked to refrain from expressing support or disagreement verbally. Or with sounds such as applause or snapping, with the exception of declarations. Traditionally, support is shown through American Sign Language applause or jazz hands. Again, thank you for joining us, and thank you for listening.
Thanks for that, Alicia. We have five people signed up to speak, two in person and three virtual. Each person will have three minutes. Our two in-person speakers are Makin Coles and Terry Palmos in that order. Can you turn the, okay, light, lights on?
Sorry.
You're good to go.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name's Makin Coles. I live at Seventeenth and Mapleton. I wanna talk to you tonight about, uh, looking forward. About the length of time that is in the, built into the process that staff has suggested here between. Now and when we might get to some housing in the planning reserve. Blue cities and blue legislators at the federal level are notoriously bad at executing. On construction projects. The Biden administration infrastructure plan was passed three years ago this month. Set aside seven and a half billion dollars for electric chargers for cars to address climate. And as you've all seen in the papers, three years later, only seven have been built in the entire country. As a blue city, we have these same types of problems, this slow process. The hospital site on Broadway was purchased nine years ago for forty million dollars by the city. And the council on which I served did that, and we were hoping that we would get new units for people to live in. But there's not a single residential unit there in nine years. Fifty percent of our renters are cost burden. BVSD student population is declining. Schools, more schools are likely to be closed. Young people are leaving. And frankly, the buildings that we have built are not well-received or well-liked by people. They are typically rectangular blocks that nobody would really, nobody can think of living there for a long period of time. ADU reform took us three years in Boulder. Occupancy reform took eight years, and after the state acted this year. Look, on both of those issues, looking back at the long Boulder process we had makes our processes look. Not just silly, but really laughable. So I'd like you to put this project on a fast track. If there's reason to delay, let's at least do a pilot project. Let's take a portion of this area, and I asked Alicia to distribute these brochures, which the Palmoses put together a couple of years ago. But their property is relatively close to the sewer disposal plant. Let's do a pilot to show how we can build a new community that is high density, that is walkable. That's part of a fifteen-minute neighborhood. It will require the city to put in protected pathways and bike lanes to get there.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Now we have Terry Palmos.
Hello, good evening. I often joke with my friend Makin that when you talk about planning in Boulder, you have to use dog ears. You know, it, it runs a little longer than, than originally planned. But anyway, with that said, good evening. My name is Terry Palmos. Two seven seven five Iris Avenue. Um, my family has owned twenty-three acres of land on the southern edge of the planning reserve. For over fifty years. It was bought the year before I was born, and now my kids are, are going to college. Our property is bordered by existing housing to the east and west, city parkland to the north, and the recently annexed property to the south. Where eighty-three townhomes are proposed to be built. Over the last twenty years, the city has done a great job of facilitating construction and purchase of smaller deed-restricted four-rent apartments. Unfortunately, we haven't had the same success providing permanently affordable middle-income family housing, AKA the missing middle. There are many reasons why, but mainly there aren't any large parcels of inexpensive land within the city, and that's what's needed to build this type of housing. We believe the planning reserve is the only feasible location where deed-restricted middle-income family housing can be built. I've heard discussions about the potential high cost of infrastructure and water needs and various other concerns associated with going into the planning reserve. As I mentioned, our property is on the southernmost edge surrounded by existing development and city parkland. Geographically, it's really separate from the rest of the planning reserve. Given its unique location, we could consider our twenty-three acre site as like Makin said, a pilot project. Something where we can explore middle-income affordable housing. It would require significantly less infrastructure, planning efforts, and could provide a much faster solution. To our missing middle. We respectfully request the city council and planning board take the next step and allow staff to do the community needs assessment to better understand the opportunities available. In the planning reserve. Let's take the next step and see where it takes us. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Terry. Actually, I have a question for you. So do you feel like, um, with the ownership situation that you had, that you would be able to provide deed-restricted, middle-income affordable housing? Without outside subsidy?
I do believe, first response is yes. It all depends, as we all know, when we're, when we're balancing the affordable housing market rate equation, right? How much market rate you have compared to how much affordable you can have, and what type of market rate you have, and what type of affordable you have. But with us, we're a little bit unique. We were, we've been in the real estate business in Boulder since the sixties, really since the seventies. I grew up in the business forever. We have twenty-three acres privately owned, local developer, Boulder through and through, born here, raised here, the whole thing. So if there's an opportunity to, to do something. That's a little, you know, a, as a test pilot, is, is a pilot program. We're here and we're open-minded and we're available, and we're happy to work with everybody here to, to get something done. Sooner than the very long process that we heard about. I understand when you're talking about five hundred acres, it's a very long process. A lot goes into that. But our site really is boxed in. I mean, if you look at it, there, you see it.
It's a little more limited of a question than that, but that's good. Thank you for your answer. I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Pardon me, Erin, could I ask just a quick clarification? So, hi Terry, yeah, nice to see you.
Sorry.
No worries. Terry was on HAB when I was the liaison to HAB, so nice to see you. When you say you could potentially provide middle-income affordable housing, are, is that like as a percentage of what would be built? I'm assuming you don't mean a hundred percent of the property would be?
Yeah, it would, it would, I mean, without a lot of, the affordable housing game, as we know, is financed in a lot of different ways. There's cash-in-lu funds, there's li-tac funds, there's all kinds of different funds that can go into the equation, how to pay for it. So depending on all those variables, you know, that determines how much affordable housing you can build. My gut is telling me that we would need to balance affordable with market rate because typically the market rate plays for the affordable.
Thank you.
Okay, great. We're now going to go to our virtual speakers. There are three of them. They are Janet Heimer, Lynn Siegel, and Lisa Spalding. So Janet, you're up.
Hi, I'm Janet Heimer, and I'm here tonight because I am in support of Area Three Planning Reserve being used for affordable housing. I have lived in Boulder since nineteen sixty-nine and have many friends, particularly those friends of color, who have had to leave Boulder because of the lack of affordable housing. In my opinion, we have become a very elitist community. If I had not bought my house in nineteen eighty-seven, I would definitely not be able to afford to live here. My daughter, who was born and raised here, can't afford to live here. She would love to be able to buy a house where she grew up. She loves the outdoors and lifestyle of Boulder. And as an older adult, I would love to have her live close by so she could help me when I needed it. I recently saw a condominium that was two bedrooms, two baths, twelve hundred square feet, listed for one million fifty thousand dollars, and the HOA fees were six hundred and eighty-two a month. I'm sorry, but that to me is outrageous. We must make decisions to increase the chances for affordable and middle-income housing. If not now, then when? I have heard it can take a long time for this piece of property to go through the proper channels. We can't wait that long. We need to speed things up and to have that process be as fast as possible and make sure that the housing needs which are urgent in this city be addressed now. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Lynn Siegel.
If you want to solve a housing crisis, you don't solve it with more housing. You don't in a closed-loop system like Boulder. It's saturated, it's an inelastic market. So stop all of this commentary about how this is affordable housing. You know what middle, how, missing middle is? At twenty-two oh six Pearl, it's seventeen hundred twenty-six dollars a month for three hundred square feet without a parking space. That's the missing middle, and that's three years ago, so now it's two to three thousand. Eighty to one-twenty percent area median income. That's the missing middle. So, you know, people that own prop, land there, they want to get into that. You know what the planning reserve is for, and I've been around here forty years watching this? The planning reserve is for emergencies. It's for agriculture, it's for solar, it's for when we have a Third World War because we're bombing Gaza. That's what the planning reserve is for. That's an emergency. That is what the planning board, planning reserve is for. And I've been watching this a long time. And I know what you're gonna do. I know what all of you are gonna do. It's so obvious. More housing, more housing, more housing. You just don't get it. More housing does not equal more housing. It just means more people. It just means more infrastructure. It just means more budgets not being met. And you know, I had to stay at the Comfort Inn up by the homeless center for five days because I had to leave my house because Boulder County decided I had to because I'm like a terrorist in my own house where there's two bedrooms for me to stay. And my housemate can already stay there, twenty-one-year-old from Munich. He can stay there, but not me because I called out David Hashamaji with Energy Smart on the fact that he dropped one of their main vendors that they're giving out for, for, you know, energy efficiency retrofits. He dropped them because they wanted, the county wanted to put up the solar job with Stellar, the name of the company, in adverse conditions that would violate their warranty and subject them to potential damages from the customer. And Boulder County was unethical in doing that, and I called it out. So I got hit with my retrofit, and my bike was stolen today. What are you doing about that in front of the county courthouse?
Thank you for your testimony. Your time is up. Our last speaker tonight is Lisa Spalding.
Lisa Spalding, speaking for Plan Boulder County. Plan Boulder County agrees with Councilmember Wallach's analysis of the Area Three Planning Reserve Urban Services Study and his conclusion, as we surmised, we're not putting words in your mouth, that the annexation is not financially feasible at this time. We have looked at several other aspects of the possible annexation and conclude that it would be premature and misleading to focus on the planning reserve when there are so many other developments on the table right now. The only community benefit of annexation that has been identified publicly is the potential to increase affordable housing. However, our current affordable housing regulations only increase our shortfall. Without an alternative approach, Boulder citizens have no reason to believe the development of the Area Three Planning Reserve will help us reach or maintain an appropriate number of affordable housing units. Current data shows that we have more than enough potential housing units in our city for any reasonable population growth. Plans for between eight thousand seven hundred and forty and nine thousand seven hundred and forty additional housing units have either been approved or in the development review pipeline or are in areas annexed for future housing, including the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan, the Transit Area Village Plan, the CU South Annexation Agreement, Williams Village, and Alpine Balsam. Family-friendly vibrant neighborhoods, the planning reserve, and a possibly decommissioned airport would bring the total to between twenty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred. Boulder's current population is around a hundred and five thousand and decreasing. An increase in housing of this magnitude assumes population growth of over fifty thousand people. Unless our objective is to increase our population to a hundred and fifty thousand or more people, we have more than enough potential housing units without totally eliminating established, single-family neighborhoods or considering annexing the Area Three Planning Reserve at this time. We have a finite amount of land, and we must ensure that it benefits our citizens. The recent federal election is certain to introduce significant economic and political volatility across the country. Unless it is absolutely necessary, we should not rush into opening more of our limited land to development that we may not be able to manage properly. If you decide to proceed with the potential to develop the Area Three Planning Reserve, please carefully analyze all financial and social impacts, then let the citizens vote on whether or not we want this for our future. Thank you. And there are more details and numbers in the letter that we sent you.
Thank you. All right, that's our last speaker. So thanks to everyone who came out and spoke to us this evening. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. So that brings an end to our business for this evening. So George, I'll turn to you to take the next step.
Sure. I'd like to ask for a motion for the Planning Board to continue the agenda item for Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, for deliberation of an action for the proposed service area expansion into the Area Three Planning Reserve as part of the twenty twenty-five major update to the BBC Comprehensive Plan. No additional, as already reminded, there's no additional comment will be taken on November nineteenth regarding this item. Could I have a motion from a Planning Board member?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Great. Shall we take a quick vote? ML?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. I'll pass it back over to you, Mayor.
Thanks so much, George. All right, so similarly, I'm going to request a motion to continue the public hearing to our November twenty-first meeting for council discussion and action on the proposed service area expansion into the Area Three Planning Reserve as part of the twenty twenty-five major update to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. No additional public comment will be taken on November twenty-first regarding this item.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please, Alicia?
Yes, sir, thank you. We'll start the roll call for the continuation of the public hearing with Councilmember Shuhart.
Yes.
Wallach?
Aye.
Weiner?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Benjamin?
Yes.
Mayor Bronkit?
Yes.
And Councilmember Marcus?
Yes.
The motion to continue the public hearing to the next City Council meeting, November twenty-first, is hereby approved unanimously.
Thanks so much. All right, well, Planning Board colleagues, it's been a delight to have you here with us this evening so much. Thanks so much for joining us, and we look forward to the outcome of your November nineteenth deliberations.
I'm wondering if they need a motion to adjourn or to call an adjournment?
We can, I'll call an adjournment for the Planning Board. Thank you very much.
Great, and I think with the amount of reshuffling, we're going to need a few minutes, so I'm going to call a recess for six minutes. We'll be back at seven forty-two. All right, well, it's seven forty-two, so as promised, I will gavel us back in. And welcome, our new attendees. Thanks for being here, and let's go to our next time, please, Alicia.
Yes, sir, thank you. Our next item on tonight's agenda is item number four, Matters from the City Manager. For A is the Update on the City's Engagement Strategic Framework.
Thanks. Thanks so much, Alicia. Our next item, Mayor, Council had a desire and so happy to be able to bring it forward to learn a little bit more about how the city engages with our community. And certainly, there has been a lot of work done in the past on that effort. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Communications, and it's Sarah Huntley.
Thanks, Naria. Good evening, Council. I'm Sarah Huntley, the Director of Communications and Engagement. And we want to thank you for this opportunity tonight to be able to provide an overview of the work that our team's been doing for the last seven years. We're going to make it as quick as possible, but we have a lot to share with you tonight. I want to just point out that while we represent a centralized engagement effort, this work is also supported by many other colleagues across the organization. And we do this as a part of our shared commitment to good engagement. Tonight, we're going to cover the context and content very briefly of the Engagement Strategic Framework, really drilling into two focus areas, making sure that engagement is meaningful and inclusive. We're going to share a little bit about the capacity-building efforts that we've been building out over the last years to support the citywide approach. We're going to share a little bit about lessons learned and best practices. And then probably the part that's going to be most interesting is the path forward for continuing to involve our engagement programming. Before I turn over to my teammates, I do want to ground us together first in one principle that I think guides all of us in our work. The city of Boulder and each of you serves within a model of representative government. This means that at the end of the day, through a combination of city administration leadership and your policy direction, we're making decisions that impact our community. That's a significant responsibility. But we aren't alone. We have an amazing community here in Boulder, and they want to be involved. They want to challenge us to consider different perspectives and solutions to problems, and they want to make a positive contribution to their local government. Since twenty seventeen, we've been working to create a culture and processes that makes this possible. With that, I'm going to pass over to Ryan, who's going to talk a little bit about- With that, I'm going to pass over to Ryan, who's going to talk a little bit about our engagement journey in the Reader's Digest version.
Thank you, Sarah, and good evening, council. My name is Ryan Hinchin, he/him, and I serve the people of Boulder as Community Engagement Manager. I'm eager to begin with a bit of context that shares this journey over the past few years. It really begins with community input. And in 2015, council was hearing from community that the way the city was conducting engagement was not working, that there was not a lot of trust in the process. The city pulled together a public participation working group of council and staff and community members who really identified some of the key problems, looked at some of the core principles of best-in-class engagement, and really came forward with two recommendations. You know, one, the city has to change the culture of community engagement and utilize a comprehensive decision-making process. And so to move forward with these two recommendations, city staff developed and launched an engagement strategic framework in November 2017 that really described meaningful and inclusive engagement and, you know, brought together staff and council and community on the same page about this work. The city also created new positions dedicated to this culture change. A new engagement team began within the city manager's office to advise and build capacity of colleagues across the city organization. And then in June 2020, a new city department, Communication Engagement, was created to best leverage the ways that great communication is vital to and enhances community engagement. And thank you. And then this engagement strategic framework really recognizes that our city government makes better decisions and creates more responsive programs and resources when the community we serve has a meaningful voice. And so this framework talks a bit more in detail about that meaningful and inclusive engagement, ensuring that that's transparent, that it's consistent, appropriately scaled, and really focuses on reducing barriers to participation. So I'll turn to my colleague now, Angela, who will illustrate how staff builds capacity for this engagement throughout our city.
And good evening, council. My name is Angela Maria Ortiz Roa. My pronouns are she/her, ella-la. I am the Community Engagement Senior Program Manager. I am, I used, before I joined the city, I was part of the Engage Language Access Team that supported community engagement spaces. And it was through that work that I decided that I wanted to join city staff to continue to improve and polish our engagement work. I joined the city in May 2022, and since then, I have been responsible for coordinating and facilitating the Engagement Coordination Committee. This is a space that brings staff from different departments. We currently have 32 active members, plus 10 supportive staff like Sarah and Pam Davids and Amy Kane, making sure that that space has a secure space for conversation. Part of the goals that we have in the ECC is to accomplish a consistent citywide implementation of the engagement strategic framework. We also want to make sure that staff have the opportunity to learn, understand, and deploy best practices and innovative strategies to better serve the community. And we want to provide a space for coordination, communication, and sharing of lessons learned, wins, and challenges in a supportive space for all staff conducting engagement. Part of the work that we also do to build capacity for staff is provide trainings. We have the gearing up for community engagement training that happened twice a year. And this space is a three-and-a-half-hour training that introduces staff to tools, resources, and supportive spaces that we have for them when doing engagement. After the minimum wage engagement campaign that we just went through, we actually had two city of Louisville staff members join one of our trainings to learn about our work. We also had library staff, now from the library district, wanting to learn and participate in our ECC space as well. Part of the tools that we also offered and the guidance are, we have a dedicated space, it's called the Outreach Outpost, and it's in our internal, well, interweb. And it's a resource library that is available citywide, so not only for members of the ECC, the Engagement Coordination Committee, but for anybody of the city. We offered a variety of tools in that space. A few that I would like to highlight is we have an engagement plan template that walks staff through a detailed plan for meaningful engagement processes. We also have a recently developed document called Start Here When You're Doing Engagement that really highlights from the high-level documents like our SER framework all the way to day-of-event logistics. We have also captured a lot of resources related to language access, protocols, best practices, current lists of vetted professional interpreters and translators that are available for staff to collaborate in their projects. Another thing is we also provide trainings in collaboration with many of our community partners. In 2024, we had trainings facilitated by the Center for People with Disabilities as well as Rocky Mountain Equality, formerly known as Outboulder. We are very proud of what we're creating in this space. I want to recognize that we also have a lot of work to do in terms of building capacity for our staff in order to have a consistent deployment of best practices and engagement work. But I feel very happy and proud to be part of this team, and I look forward to continue to do this work alongside community and all of us here present tonight. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Angela. One of the things I just want to point out about the capacity building that's so important is that when the Public Participation Working Group began capturing feedback from community, what they told us is that the experience community members have varied dramatically, depending on what department they were engaging with, what project they were engaging on. They didn't know what to expect because things were very different depending on the team that organized the opportunities. So we really are trying to school everybody in what our commitment looks like and what that means when you're actually planning opportunities and making sure that we're centering both the principles of ensuring that people feel like their voice matters and also that lots of people can feel welcome and included. So I've been asked to drill a little bit down into some of the best practices tonight. We really could have chosen an endless list of things to discuss with you, but just based on some of the questions you've been asking lately, we thought we would talk about one example related to meaningful engagement and one around inclusive engagement. So hopefully, in the interest of time, you'll feel those, you'll agree with us that these are worthwhile things to drill down on. So, next slide. I'm going to talk first about the meaningful engagement and why we lean into our engagement spectrum to make sure that engagement's meaningful. And then my colleagues are going to talk about inclusive engagement. So first, the spectrum. You can see it on your screen. I don't think it's new to you. I think most of you have seen it before. But this tool was rolled out with our strategic framework in 2017, and it's been really helpful as a way for us to evaluate the many, many topics the community might want to help shape in Boulder. In the Communications and Engagement Department, every single member of our team works within this spectrum. So our communication folks are largely in inform, sometimes a little bit in consult, and they're pushing out information that helps people understand and participate in their local government, whether that's through programs and services or decision-making processes. Information sets the most important vital foundation, no matter where we move on the spectrum after that. Our engagement side of the house then helps us make strategic decisions about where on the spectrum the engagement part should fall. This spectrum was created by the International Association of Public Participation. Many organizations that support excellence in government, including the National League of Cities and the International City and County Managers Association, train its members in the IAP2 spectrum. It's well-regarded across a variety of cultures internationally. In recent years, a version of this has also been used by organizations that are working to really center equity, to help individuals in historically excluded communities know what they can expect, understand the value proposition of participating, and to address the risk of disillusionment and fatigue. The spectrum recognizes first that not every decision warrants the same level of participation. And second, that there is an ethical obligation to ensure that both community members and decision-makers, which are often you on the council dais, are clear about their potential for influence. Many city projects will remain at the same level throughout an entire engagement process, but as we've leaned into the spectrum, we've seen that there are nuances. Sometimes, we might have a project where multiple decisions are being made along the way that informs the next phase, and so those parts of the project might be in different parts of the spectrum. Other times, we might recognize that there's a specific set of community members who are going to be more impacted, so we might engage with them a little bit higher on the spectrum. It doesn't really, the combination of levels works just as well as having one level across, but the most important thing is that we have clear communication and alignment as staff that are planning engagement, community members who are participating, and those of you who are taking the feedback on where we are and what the promise looks like. We've learned that while it can be tempting to choose the highest level of the spectrum, collaborate, every time, this is not actually considered best practice. This level of engagement takes significant time and resources. I know we've stood before you and said, "We need more time if you want more voices," more than once. It can lead to community fatigue, especially in smaller populations. And most importantly, it commits you all to implement the community recommendations to the maximum extent possible. So that's a pretty hefty promise that we're making. There are certainly times in Boulder where collaborate is needed, and we've really benefited from the richness of that kind of engagement. But good engagement is also possible at the other ends of the spectrum. So we provided quite a bit of detail in your memo, which we've consolidated onto one single slide for the purposes of this presentation. But we thought it might be helpful to show a recent engagement that falls into each of these levels and just talk quickly about how we determined which level it should fall into. So one that comes up in the consult level is the 2023 engagement work around the Community Broadband Partnership. As you all know, we've been talking about broadband for a number of years. But this particular phase of the project wasn't designed to ask people if we should make broadband a community and council priority or city priority. We'd already made that decision. But the team that was advancing the work needed some more specific feedback around a specific set of questions to be able to really make sure that we were focusing our time and energy in the right places. So you had already provided a direction that this was a priority work. We really wanted to center on the how for the work and how to make sure that if we bring this kind of asset into the community, that we're ensuring equitable access. So we used the engagement to collect some key pieces of information to design the overall strategy. And you'll actually be hearing very soon, a couple of meetings from now, I think, on what some of the recommendations and outcomes are. The second one, an example in the Involve level, was Boulder Junction Phase 2, and I know many of you were able to participate in some of that engagement and had some really positive feedback to give to the staff team. As often is the case in the city, this project, like the previous one, was built off work and engagement done previously. The goal was to update the most critical aspects of a transit village area plan that was adopted 15 years ago. Council did not ask staff to start all over again, to develop a new plan. But we did recognize that some conditions have changed. And so the direction and the scope that was given to staff was to do a limited engagement around the current and future needs through an amendment process. So it was a finite process. The Involve level allowed us to engage in a series of conversations, so not just one touch point, but with, really with those most impacted by the decisions. And staff was able to adhere to a relatively short timeline to bring those important voices to the forefront. The last example we have for you is one of the more robust engagements we've done recently, which is around the Boulder Municipal Airport Community Conversation. And we chose to be in collaborate in that space because it became pretty clear, as we were scoping the project, that this was no traditional airport strategic plan update. In fact, there was some interest in community of talking about whether there should be an airport at all. So that automatically became a much more complex conversation, and it was really important that we slow it down a little bit and engage in processes that brought in a lot of different voices and perspectives. You all really directed us, I think, to make sure that the engagement was really robust around this. So we designed a process that included a community working group and many other methods of reaching the cross-section of community. And through that engagement, although we don't have a decision yet because we're waiting on some other facts and information, both opportunities and concerns really were able to be elevated, and there was a vision created with a range of options that might be available. So that's an example where we really took more time in a very deliberate process to make sure that when it comes time for you all to make a decision, you benefit from lots of different perspectives and lived experiences. So that closes out our sort of deep dive into the spectrum and why using the spectrum is a way to make sure that engagement is meaningful. I'm now going to ask my colleagues and one of our community connectors to share with you a little more about the Community Connectors program, some of which I know you're familiar with. But then mostly out of that, we're going to talk about some of the key lessons we've learned through our Community Connectors' participation and leadership about equitable engagement. But first, I'm going to ask Adriana to share just a little bit of perspective with you about how far we've come since she originally participated in the program.
Thank you, Sarah. Well, hi, everyone. My name is Adriana Paola Palacios Luna. I use pronouns she/her, ella-la. And as you know, I'm part of the Community Connectors in Residence, and I'm also part of the Project Community Connectors, which is like a different role, and both are very meaningful and very interesting of my perspective, my experience here. I'm a Mexican woman, mestiza, part of the artist community, Spanish-speaking community, migrant community, micro-business community, so a little bit involving many communities here in the city. And because of that, I have been able to connect, as you know, the Community Connectors. We are kind of like a bridge between services, projects, programs that the city has with many communities that we are part of. And I, what I have seen is like how the people is very eager to share their perspective, right? Because there are many voices that have been historically there, and it is very nice that we are now getting ears to be open to listen to all these voices, right? Because it's not that, sometimes when I hear like excluded or less represented, I believe that we are represented, we are not excluded, but we haven't been heard or been included in the right ways, right? And I think that's something that we have been supporting to build that trust, that connections, where the community members, when they have like a question or they have, not only when we go to our communities and say, "Oh, well, the city is working on these projects or these programs, and your feedback will be very important." But now is the community members that are reaching out when they have questions or concerns, and they are trying to see, like, figure it out, like, where to talk with somebody in the city or how to engage more. So part of our activities have been doing some trainings with our community, a training that the Community Connectors in Residence, we designed, and now we're moving to a second phase to provide more elements and resources and tools for our communities to engage more directly with the city. And so I find that And so I find that it has been very meaningful for our communities to connect with the city and being able to provide this feedback. And as Angela men- Angela mentioned before, um, there are some challenges still to work on. Um, but that's the, the richness of this process, right? The dialectic process that like going to reality and then reality providing feedback and then rethinking and going back and like having all that movement together, right? And with the city, the community connectors project is more like a specific projects. Like I was part of the, uh, Boulder Junction Phase Two. And right now I'm also part of the Phase Two of the Civic Area. So it is a little bit different, but also is still, um, like that involvement to connect with our communities. And I can mention, um, that's something very important of having this space is that the more we connect with many communities, the more strong we can create and better projects. So I really appreciate that we are working on this together.
Before, um, Ryan takes over, I just want to also point out, as Adriana mentioned, she's a member of our arts community. And she's been really helpful and instrumental in helping us bring arts into engagement, sometimes with her own beautiful work. So I just want to express some gratitude for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Adriana. And as, as council knows, uh, the city of Boulder has been a leader in partnering with trusted community members to make engagement more inclusive through this model, community connector model. Um, each of you have a community connector manual, uh, at your seats. And the memo also shares more information about this, this program um, and a recent update from community connectors in, in residence. And so we didn't want to use that time to, to repeat that information. But do, as Sarah said, bring up some of those key lessons that we've learned through partnership with community connectors. Um, first, we know and, and have learned that when we center historically excluded communities in our engagement processes, this makes engagement easier to access for the whole community. All right, for example, when we simplify the language of, of content ahead of, say, for translation, that content is then more adjustable for all participants. We've also found that co-creation, uh, of engagement processes that meet people where they are and where community input helps to identify and address barriers to participation, that increases depth of participation, uh, for communities. And for example, uh, back to the airport community conversations, uh, the city hosted several engagement sessions that were very specifically in the community rooms of Vista Village and San Lazaro, uh, manufactured home communities, uh, where people lived, right? Instead of inviting, uh, folks to an unfamiliar space across town. Um, on the next one, next slide here, we've also learned that curiosity, creativity and art can really support participants and, and, you know, their input or, or feedback. And as Adriana mentioned, um, you know, in the building power and raising voice, voices sessions that community connectors have, uh, they begin dialogue around community strengths and around community needs by encouraging participants to sketch out, you know, what, what is their ideal community? What may that look like? What are some of those aspects? And next, the, the city has, has long gathered quantitative data through surveys and questionnaires and feedback forms. And we recognize the need to present qualitative data, the, the stories, the narrative alongside this quantitative data. Uh, for example, engagement exploring an increase in the minimum wage, uh, which you all recently considered, really included economic analysis and questionnaire results and themes from small group conversations uh, that really pulled the, the themes and a note, uh, that captured the lived experience of our community. And lastly, we're, we're eager to limit engagement fatigue by really leveraging previously, uh, heard recent community input. And for example, when, uh, engaging the community on the city's, uh, first ever racial equity plan, you know, staff did not start from scratch, but we really started from a draft that was based on what we had heard from community, uh, in, in recent years. Really allowing feedback to begin from a much deeper place, uh, when those sessions began. And we do recognize that we'll have many more lessons learned as we continue to evolve our engagement practices. Uh, a bit looking forward into some of the short-term, um, action items that, that our team is moving forward with. We recognize there's a lot of work to do as we continue to strengthen that culture of meaningful and inclusive engagement. First up, uh, increasing the city's emphasis on data, uh, fidelity and process evaluation. Our engagement teams committed to strengthening our data collection and our evaluation practices, making sure that we're able to consistently measure and improve the experiences of community members and policymakers. Um, making sure that we're exploring better ways of presenting that qualitative and quantitative data together, um, sharing a more holistic perspective, right? That helps put you as policymakers in a better position, uh, to make decisions, uh, that have an impact on our community. Um, staff plan, we do plan to take a significant step forward, um, in this work with our twenty twenty-six community survey. Um, that's really intended to, to gauge a community-wide perspective on city service, uh, delivery and performance. In the past, this has been in partnership with, uh, Polco, uh, a partner. And in the next iteration, we really plan to, to seek expanded budget and, and scope for, for this work to allow for a companion qualitative approach, uh, that can come, uh, also with a quantitative approach, ensuring that we're hearing, uh, more from our historically excluded communities. And we plan to issue that RFP, uh, for this work in the second half of, of twenty twenty-five. Um, next up, reevaluating the city's online engagement platform. Um, we do intend to, to really assess, um, and, and address some of the, the current and emerging needs uh, for this platform, Be Heard Boulder. And we've really seen that it, it has generated much larger numbers of participation than sometimes an in-person engagement session may allow. And we're not seeing that necessarily increasing participation for some, uh, communities less likely to, to engage. And, and for example, our, our renter community, lower income residents. And we've seen that with this platform, language access barriers remain even if that content is, is translated. And so again, in twenty twenty-five, we're planning to put forward a, a request for proposals and RFP to really evaluate, uh, different online platforms, uh, that may better serve our, our evolving needs. Um, next up, innovate through, uh, Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan Update. I know council's familiar with much of this, um, but we have this great opportunity to try a few new approaches with engagement. Very briefly, some of these include hosting a community assembly, uh, partnering with community-based organizations to gather feedback from specific communities, and embedding artists in various facets of engagement to, to really collect, reflect and embody, uh, community input. Next up is continuing to, to evolve and, and grow our community connectors model, including an outreach pilot over the next few years. Um, continuing to, um, build on momentum generated with emergency response connectors. And it's been active, uh, since twenty twenty and sunsets this month. We're planning to leverage, uh, existing ARPA funds in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, uh, for this pilot that really continues direct dialogue with historically excluded communities that shares city services, that shares engagement opportunities, uh, and that navigates sort of resources as, as needed. And then lastly, updating the city's engagement strategic framework. Um, work is underway to detail progress, uh, to date, as well as outline the continued work ahead. We really anticipate that some of the more foundational elements are, are expected to remain, but want to make sure that there's an updated document that provides an opportunity uh, to ensure the, the content and the commitment remain fresh uh, and that the lessons that we've learned, you know, some of which we've shared briefly tonight, can really be formalized, uh, in that document. And I'll turn to Sarah as we move to close.
Thanks. We have one final slide. So we called it a coming soon slide because it's building off feedback we just heard from you all a couple of weeks ago, and we don't quite have the pathway figured out yet. But wanted to acknowledge the question that some of you have been asking about feedback forms and the limited sample sizes that we're getting. Um, we want to acknowledge that even on some of the forums we've had on Be Heard Boulder that have gotten like fifteen hundred responses, which is unheard of in some communities, is still a very small percentage of our hundred and five thousand population. So we, we absolutely understand the concerns. At the same time, we just want to make it clear that we always use a wide variety of techniques. And no one technique is going to comprehensively hear from the whole community. Even the, the statistically valid representative randomized surveys we do, the, some of the sample sizes are small. So we really want to think about, um, how to reach the missing middle. And as part of our framework update, we're going to create sort of a toolkit cheat sheet that explains the different techniques we use in combination with one another and what their pros and cons are to help the community understand and hopefully help council understand. You know, it's same problem that we have with in-person engagement is we might host an open house that thirty people come to and they're sharing their perspective and it matters. It's a point of time perspective. But if that's the only thing we did, you're only hearing from thirty people. So we really think we have to do a collective cohesive engagement to hear from different segments. We are also willing, in addition to this toolkit, if there's a notify for council, we'd be happy to host a lunch and learn to discuss the various techniques more and really drill down into that question you had about limited sample sizes. But that would be something we'd have to plan for the future. So I know we have exceeded our twenty minutes by, uh, about fourteen or fifteen minutes. But this was seven years of work, trying to boil it down. So we're happy to, um, toss over for questions, conversation. However, you all would like to use the time this evening.
Thank you, Sarah. And thanks so much to all of you for being here. And I want to particularly thank Adriana Angel for, uh, all the extraordinary work you're doing in the community connectors program, the language access. And it's really, really amazing work. So I'll look to my colleagues to see if we have any questions for you. I saw Matt and then Tina and Tara. My eyes are in perfect.
Well, thank you guys for presenting this update, um, and compressing a whole packet into one slide is, uh, you're setting a terrible precedent for your colleagues, I must say. Uh, so if they're listening, they, they have now know where the bar set. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, first is with regards to the toolkit. Could perhaps the engagement committee take a peek at that before it goes to council? Just to give a little bit of touch from the engagement committee, or do you find that that's appropriate? I just think that some of these engagement things and some of the stuff that we've been working on may, may help sort of shape that for how it ends up to council.
So we're happy to bring any of these materials to the council engagement subcommittee. I do want to just remind folks that that committee's scope is how council can engage best with community, not necessarily the city, but the tools we use can overlap both those needs. So I think that would be fine.
No, it's a great distinction, but I think there's also a lot of inter- interplay with how those occur, with how we engage with community sometimes fills a gap with some of the where, where engagement in other forms may not happen. And sometimes we want to marry those up really closely. So that would be, that would be our thing. The other, uh, the other question I have is actually a question for Adriana. I was hoping you could maybe take a little bit of time and explain, uh, and tell us about your experiences as a community connector. Um, you certainly exemplify what the dedication and commitment is for community connectors. So I would certainly just love to hear, what's your experience been like?
Well, as I mentioned before, um, I find it like very meaningful to be, to have this space where we can connect with information and then bring it to our communities, that right? Because even it has been like a learning process for me, it, starting with that, right? Like what resources are available? How can you access for information? How can you connect to services or resources? So every time that a community member reach out to us, um, to me in this case, I, I reach out right to Ryan or any of the team and like, oh, we have this, um, concern. What can we do? How can we advise our communities? So, and then when the community member feels that they have been hurt and in another way, they maybe weren't able to solve an issue. And it has been like having problems with their heat in middle of the winter or having issues with the police and not being heard. And le- learning even how to make a complaint if that's necessary and things like that. So it has been a very, uh, strong learning process for myself. And that makes it realize like how important is, uh, to have all this information for all our communities. Because it is a very, we know that information is power and privilege. And how can we make it affordable and accessible to everybody? Because the more, um, the more information the community has, well, it will be more proactive, more, um, yeah, we will work for better lives for everybody because then you can talk about what are your concerns? How to solve them? How do we partner in everything, right? Thank you.
That's great. I got, um, Tina, Tara and Taisha, three Ts in a row.
Yeah, thank you for the overview. Um, I just had a comment about, um, thinking if there are conversations going on, on how community members could sign up and get alerted proactively of any survey or engagement opportunity that's happening without having to visit the website or read different departmental emails. Um, I've noticed that sometimes surveys are on Be Heard, but sometimes they're actually not. They can be housed in different places, so it's sometimes difficult to be able to spend the time to go through them. So that's just one, um, question I have about whether that conversation's going on.
I think that's a really interesting suggestion. And one of the reasons that you're seeing some things happening in other platforms is because we've recognized that the Be Heard platform, as it currently exists, has some limitations and really hasn't evolved with best practices. So part of the solution is looking for a platform that can address all our needs, where people can go to one place. But I suspect there will always be sort of things happening in the ether. And so having some way for people to get alerted is a really interesting idea that we'll take back to our comms team.
So I'm going to give you some thoughts and I actually want your opinions on it. So it's a common question. My first, I'm just going to tell a quick story. My hu- sometimes I ask, say to my husband, Robert, I want your opinion on something. And then he gives me his opinion and then I do the opposite thing. Why is that? Because I just needed to, I needed somebody's opinion to see how I felt about it. Do you know what I mean? But he did not take it well, which brings me to Iris and the airport. So I guess my question to you is, is I did not feel that Iris was the best ever community engagement because a lot of people gave us their opinion and we didn't, we used that opinion. But I came to the conclusion that we should do Iris, but we had a lot of enraged people, a real lot. To the point where I finally asked people to call me and one by one, I just spoke to them about my opinions and listened to them and they listened to me. So I, I, I guess my first question about Iris would be, do, did the people who you engaged know that we were always going to do something there? Because a lot of the conversation was, I don't want you to do anything there. So how does it, how is it framed in that particular engagement that? And do you ever wonder why, or do you disagree with me that it was, that it wasn't the best? And I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying it, for me, it was a difficult time and not helpful.
Sure. Thank you. I'd appreciate the question. Um, and I think with, with any engagement process, there's, there's room for, for growth. And right, we're always learning from, from what that engagement process may be and how we can strengthen that moving forward. Um, I do think that one thing that we do, try our best to do consistently across the city, uh, is make sure that our community has faith in the integrity of the process, um, whether they agree with that outcome or not. Um, and that's something that we do, um, ask in the community survey. So we're able to track that over time, right? Because we want to see that growing over time and to see more, um, you know, faith in the integrity of, of the process. And so, you know, as, as much as we can forward, for any given engagement process, you know, we try to be clear about, um, you know, here's, here's the decision that we're, we're working to make. Here's what that process looks like. Um, we want to make sure to, to hear input. And, you know, we want to make sure that community members, you know, do feel heard, even if the, the, the policy or the decision at the end is, is not mirroring, you know, their exact, uh, opinion, uh, for that specific topic.
Can I call a quee just to add some, some context since it's on our word cloud? Can I colloquy, just to add some, some context since it's on our Word Cloud? Iris and the airport were fundamentally two different processes. But, but I'm just saying, but in general, they're two different ones, right? So Iris was decided because it was part of CAN. We were gonna be doing safety improvements. And so it was on a consultant and forum level, whereas the airport, there was no decision being made. So that's why that was at a more collaborative level. So the, it, it, they're just fundamentally different in, at, at the core. And so outcomes are, are gonna be different as a result of that.
Yes, but colloquying off of your colloquy, I got a lot of calls. From the uh Community Working Group Airport people that were in it that said they thought it was terrible, they thought it was unfair. They asked me to do something about it. So in the same way, I feel like the airport. I'm mostly saying if community engagement sometimes has issues. Do we then look at it and say, how could we do it better? Because I didn't think the airport, the people on the working group, a lot of them didn't think it was a good experience either.
I wanna offer a caution here that, that we're talking about engagement in general. I don't think we're here tonight to drill in real deeply into specific projects. Um but maybe a quick answer on what Tara just offered, but I'd rather.
I'm not doing that on purpose. I'm just saying in general, how much is too much engagement? Is there such a thing as too much engagement? What do we do when we have negative feedback from the engagement? That's my general question.
Thank you, Tara, and I think there's always risk. Sorry, Brenda Rittenour, I'm the co-manager of the Engagement Team with Ryan. Um and so far a silent partner tonight. Um but just wanted to acknowledge that there's always risk. That community is unhappy with the outcome, right? Like every decision, someone in the community or large swaths of the community might be unhappy. Um and one thing that we've really tried to lean into over this past seven years. Is the expectation of the ability to influence the decision. And that's what I heard you asking about, Tara. Is what do we already know? As Matt said, we were already going to do this because it was part of CAN. And so I'm hearing you say that, how clear were we about the community? But we also know that often when we engage on decisions like that, that already have a background of decision behind them. Sometimes the community feels like it might be an opportunity to relitigate that initial decision. And we'll come at it from that perspective, no matter what staff does. And that may be a lot of the feedback you were hearing specifically. And so anything you all can do to help us clarify with community. Where we are in that massive decision-making wheel, right? Like here's the decision being made today. As you have those conversations, that just helps back us up. It helps us to have your, your powerful voices say that part of the decision had already been made. And that's not what staff was trying to do with this process.
I just wanna end with, I'm not, I'm a big fan of community engagement, but I'm also a big fan of if something goes awry to actually look at it and say, how can we be better?
So just to answer the second part of your question, like what do we learn from these things? One of the things we want to do with our data fidelity is have a much more robust evaluation process. For people who participated in these projects. We obviously can't implement that for all eighty projects that are engaging community. But next year, we're going to choose a pre and post evaluation for council priority projects. Um and really see if we can get feedback from people who actually participated, so we can make it better the next time. And the more concrete they can be in what they liked and didn't like, the easier it will be for us to iterate.
Thanks for that. All right, I got Taisha and then Ryan.
All right. Thank you so much. I am the one who asked for this, so I am just really, really grateful. Um although I'm hopeful that there's more regular or at least annual check-ins. Cause it sounds like it's been a couple of years since you've given a, a nice comprehensive overview of community engagement, uh our community engagement practices. I wanted to say thank you for just the dynamic offerings of going directly to community. And um inviting community in in a variety of different ways. Um I'm really excited about the evaluation, as you can imagine, and I am hopeful that whoever is contracted. Has a significant amount of racial and eth- and ethnic representation in leadership. Not in the person who just asks the questions or does the coding. Um I'm also really grateful of the acknowledgement around historical stakeholder fatigue, as I call it. Um and the need to align as much as possible. Um I have a variety of questions, so I'll just start off on that one, which is around that hisstakehold, stakeholder, historical stakeholder fatigue. Um so I'm at the National League of Cities. Uh I was talking with somebody about being the third African-American to ever serve, the first being when I was born in nineteen seventy-four. Um and she said, oh, you shouldn't say that, cause you know, your accomplishment. I said, ma'am, this has nothing to do about me. And my accomplishments. I am lifting that up because that means there has not been a single African-American person. Who has made a decision about our city prior to when I was born on this council. And so, um you know, that's why I'm really excited about our Community Connector Program. Um it's not a nice to have. Um it is a reflection of the historical um discrimination and barriers to making decisions. To serving not only on city council, but on our uh, on city staff. Um and um in a, even in our volunteer roles. So again, just really want to um ground us in why we're doing this, um just from a racial and ethnic uh perspective. Um and again, um really eager and excited to continue on that. Um so I have a question around feedback loops. Um so I've noticed that, you know. Going back to historically, you know, we get questions all the time and, you know, we ask and give feedback, but then nothing happens. Or um, you know, some things happen, but some things don't. And so I've noticed some inconsistencies um in. Or, or rather, in a protocol of feedback or follow-up with um those who have provided feedback. I still reflect on that incredible, beautiful spreadsheet that the climate team presented that provided. Questions from the community or, you know, whatever that public exchange was. And then they had responses for each one, including responses around things that they weren't able to do or wasn't in their authority. Um and so again, just was curious about um that process of. Um you know, you're collecting feedback, but what are you doing to then share back to those community members? Who provided feedback on either the acceptance of the feedback provided or the limitations in implementing the feedback provided.
Thank you for the question, um Councilmember Adams. Yes, so feedback loops is critically important to the meaningful engagement piece, right? Like if people don't see their voice even represented in the report outs, never mind represented in the final decision. It's gonna undermine credibility. And so we've been working to try to develop capacity across the city around the expectations. And the one you gave about climate is really a best practice of basically listing every single comment or theme. Sometimes if you have hundreds and thousands of comments, like with the Open Space um Strategic Plan work they did a few years ago. There were thousands, but at least themes. And then what I like to say is, if not, why not? So is it being incorporated into the draft recommendations? And if not, what's the rationale for it? But I also wanna say that that takes a lot of extra time and staff resources. And some smaller teams have really struggled with being able to provide that level of detail. So we need to figure out what the sweet spot is between being too vague and too thematic, so people don't see themselves represented. And really detailed and focused on each and every comment. And it, it's still a work in progress for us. And um it's helpful for me to know which examples you have found the most meaningful as decision-makers. Because that helps us figure out what level of detail is the most appropriate. One of the things that we hope to be able to do a little bit is perhaps use some of the AI technology. With very careful human supervision to tag some of the comments. So that we can see the themes that are recurring, cause that process in and of itself takes hours and hours.
Thank you for that. I will caution us on the use of AI, particularly for the racial bias. I encourage us all to consider lifting up um unmasking AI, which uh does a fantastic job of outlining the limitations. Of generative artificial um intelligence. Actually, um just had, I was at the CAUZ graduate fellows presentations of their research. And there's actually a researcher that is looking into this very issue um of the racial bias of AI. So again, have some significant concerns around that. But um again, appreciate the, the coding and of course, the level of effort. But again, I just wanna remind folks the level of effort um that it takes to be in a community that you had no say over for the majority of its existence. So um I'm hopeful that we can find some meaningful pathways. Um I'm also wondering about the feedback. I notice sometimes it um, Community Connector feedback is in our council packet. Or is a part of um some of the reports that we get on different um projects and issues. And again, just wanting to get some consistency, um because, you know, going back to the racial equity plan, there's a goal around increasing access. Not just to staff, but to council members as well. So um although I appreciate all of the efforts and communications directly to staff. Um I also um wanna make sure that we are creating opportunities for community connectors. And our community members to meet with us directly. So, and again, obviously that can happen individually, but I also appreciate the formalized um aspects around that. Um but in general, just really grateful for the Community Connector Program. Um I also noticed the well-being program for them. And I was curious if it would be possible to extend some of those offerings to our Boulder Police Oversight panelists. Who also, um I can speak from experience, experienced uh church tertiary trauma. In the hours and hours of police videos and footage that we have to watch.
I am actually um working and looking into that uh piece for our police oversight panel separately, but thank you for bringing that up.
Awesome. I, you know, I figured while I was here. Um I also love the building power, raising voices. And it made me think of the incredible work by our Latino Chamber of Boulder County that did a whole, a seat at the table training. For um community and business leaders that are interested in serving on boards and commissions. I was curious for that building power and raising voices session, if there were any um conversations or um invitations. To um deepen participation with our boards and commissions, as that is a, an acute area of need, per the report.
I can answer that. Well, the building power, raising voices, like the first part is focusing on how to. Understand the government in a non-governmental language, right? And now we're creating the second version that is more focusing on how to engage more directly, how can participate. And we have like, like sub-subjects. Like a mainframe that we are designing and co-designing with um an advisor kind of thing, right?
An advisor?
Well, uh yeah, we're collaborating with an uh, uh, uh.
Yeah, it's a graduate student um at CSU who's a former staff member. Um who spent twenty-five years um dedicated to, to the city of Boulder and has um really pioneered many of the inclusive engagement techniques. Uh that we are, are still in practice. And so we're, we're partnering with her uh over the past few months now.
Yeah, and we are working on having these sub-themes. And one is like how to participate in boards or how to engage in different ways with the city. Depending on, kind of by request of the community that we're gonna be engaging with this training. Uh we, we will have like a main uh subject and then more specific, what, what they can choose, what are they more interested in.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I'm really excited about that work. Again, the messenger matters. Uh so, you know, having a variety of different messengers is really powerful and, and again, thank you for that work. Um I had some questions on language access. And so I was curious in the evaluation that is upcoming, if there will be, if that will be inclusive of our language, language. Language action, uh access plan and our implementation effort. So specifically around the identification of linguistic needs and the assessment of the tools that have been developed.
So that's a specific subsection of our work. Um we do have a language access plan, which is separate. That includes uh a evaluation of the linguistic needs and the sort of tiered approach we're taking to meeting those. Um we'd be happy to provide more information on that.
I'm sorry, just point of clarification. So there is an evaluation of the language access plan and the quality of its implementation?
No, we have a language access plan that was just developed in the last eighteen months, twenty-four months or so. That we're starting to implement. We have not yet done an evaluation of that plan.
Okay, I didn't realize it was, I forgot that it was so short. Um does that, and I didn't have a chance to dig deep into that link. Um I was curious if there is a glossary of key terms and kind of plain language. Is one of our tools, you know, just the common, you know, AMI and some of these other terms that we use. I was just curious if we had a, a glossary of plain language. Of terms with plain language definitions.
Well, I do know that many of the projects are helping design um glossaries that are specific to the project. So that they are feeding a, a one la- larger glossary. Uh we're focusing in Spanish and then Nepali. And also I do know that there are some terminology in the language access plan. That is spelled out there in terms of like our LEPs, like limited English proficiency user. And some of the terminology that the language access plan uses. So those are two different spaces that are capturing terminology.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And thank you. I had a question about non. Uh or, or rather, other languages besides San, uh Spanish. So it's very helpful to know that you all are working. Um to ins- uh ensure that we also have or are building out uh materials in uh Nepali.
And Taisha, I'll just uh check in here. We, we are a little bit over time, so I don't know how many more questions you have, but.
Um let's see, I just have um one in a comment. So the last one is around collaboration with county, federal, and state agencies. That are also seeking feedback on similar topics from the same historically marginalized communities. Is there collaboration or is there a, you know, opportunities to deepen collaboration? I know that was something that had been raised as a concern by marginalized community members that I've talked to.
I, I could add a little bit to it. I think that there's definitely a lot of growth in that space. I feel like we have been able to identify collaboration opportunities in the past. Maybe more because of the individual connections that staff have. And uh, and the knowledge that they have of different projects and resources and other positions in other agencies. But I feel like we don't have anything that is formalized in that space. We have had conversations with the community too about the importance of developing a space. That help us capture what engagement looks like regionally. Unfortunately, in the pa- well, we had in the past something called Suma Latina. That was a, a really helpful space that we had, that was managed by Boulder County. That was really benefiting not only government agencies, but or nonprofit organizations in terms of planning. And collaboration around engagement projects. Unfortunately, that was a space that um, I don't know, they. Funding and some other issues of the county happened and no longer exist. But we are aware that they are thinking about bringing it back. And I think it will be a great opportunity for the city to connect with that space again, as we did in the past. Uh recognizing that just the management of regional engagement uh landscape is a huge lift for any one organization to manage. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Those are all my questions.
Thanks, Taisha. Ryan, you can clean this up here.
Thanks. I have a, one question and one comment. Uh first, Councilmember Adams, thanks for lifting up this important work. And Sarah and team, I'm grateful and proud of the work and I know that you're making our city stronger. And just quickly, Brenda, thanks for your invitation to council to be clear about the engagement type that we're expecting. I think that's something good for us to keep in mind and to maybe consider a, a process step as we go forward. So my question, it is a little conceptual and you can actually say, answer it another day if it's too conceptual. But um, I'm thinking about the engagement framework, um the IC, IC um abbreviations. Um as, as one common way that I hear about our, our sort of typologies of our work. I also think um in, in a practical way that I often think about maybe a different axis. I also think um in a in a practical way that I often think about maybe a different axis. And it's it's the type of decision that we're making and specifically how broad versus more tactical. And just to use an example, this is transportation because I'm closer to it, but this is, please read nothing into any policy here, but. Just conceptually, you can imagine, we might be talking about doing something to an intersection and getting feedback on that. We might be talking about a wider corridor that includes that intersection. We might be talking about the function of the whole network, which includes multiple corridors. We might be talking about our whole approach to safe streets, or we might be talking about. Do do we just want to um come up to speed with modern practice of what our national experts tell us to do? And I'm I'm just sort of thinking conceptually that at any time, um wh- when we're talking about something in that's. That crude spectrum I've just outlined, we 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 might elevate it to to a higher kind of a discussion, or we might not. Or at least I I guess I'm sort of thinking how I I would personally approach this kind of a a conversation. And I'm just wondering if this is um. The kind of a kind of a framework or something that our team thinks about with respect to, are there, is there? A place in that range where we want to occupy mostly, or or it's like a sweet spot that um community connectors does the best work? Or is it more like you just sort of can work anywhere? Or how how do you think about the where we wanna be on the breadth versus, excuse me, the narrowness? And then, or do you seek direction from council, for example, on something like that?
So I think in general, the complexity of the decision is part of why we look at the spectrum and that is an absolute factor. And the more specific you all can be with us about wow, what you're looking for can help us. In terms of community connectors, I think it depends on whether you're you're talking, so our community connectors in residence, which is our sort of most senior level. They really are looking at systems questions. And so those broad questions about how our systems operate and how they could operate better really go to that group. When you're talking about the project connectors, they might be drilling down to one of those more tactical questions for a particular project. So. We use the spectrum based on the complexity and then where we plug in community connectors involvement. Depends on that complexity as well.
If if I may too, I I just wanna say, you know, I love the question, um Councilmember, cause it. What it highlights for me, right, is the complexity of engagement. There are times, right? The the need for engagement comes at all level. There are times when it starts with council members because you're thinking about. A major, a big policy question. There are times where it originates with within the organization because we are thinking about big operational changes. There are times frankly, when we're thinking about how do we approach and ask our connectors for assistance, because there's something in our systems. That isn't working and we need to figure out, and frankly, we could use and benefit from. Community to tell us, why is this broken and it's not fixed, right? And that is one of the reasons why we look at the spectrum, because engagement really needs to come in and out. At very different levels. There is no one size fits all and no. We must always begin here and and here, because we come at this at very different ways. And I just appreciate the team who is so thoughtful about. Taking an issue and really figuring out where does this sit now? Where are you asking? What type of question is it? And thinking about where do we go from here? Cause it is a complex issue.
Oh, oh, sorry. If I could, I'll add to that. Um and I'll just bring out one of my favorite um chorus messages right now. Which is that we're not doing any that, any engagement in a vacuum most of the time, right? Every project has come out of something else. Um even our strategic plans are built on the history of how we've done that work. And we've been listening to our community for a really long time, right? And so where we are right now is really trying to mine what we've heard previously. Recognize what those gaps are in what we've heard previously, and that's. Often where we turn to our connectors to advise us in how to fill some of those gaps. But not starting from scratch. And we're just trying to tell staff that all the time right now, because I feel like. They they know that engagement is good and that they want to be informed by the community. And it feels like they have to start today to do that. So we're trying to create warehouses of information where we can pull in previous engagement. From other processes that aren't transportation to inform a transportation process, for example, right? So with the Boulder Valley Camp Plan, we're pulling in budget information, we're pulling in downtown information, we're pulling in OSMP information. You know, everything that's come in the last ten years, we're sitting down and sifting through before we decide what else we need to know. And that helps with fatigue.
Sorry, could I add something to that? And I think it's more in terms of. I recognizing that in, for example, that picture that we're looking at in the presentation. Those are all people that could be potential community connectors, that could be potential board and commission partition bands. That potentially could be city council members. So I think that we also have the responsibility and engagement with the community like directly. To build the community's capacity to step into leadership roles. So I think and and the the reason why I thought about this is because you're talking about transportation for little things and big things. And right now I'm supporting the thirtieth street, uh the North thirty street preliminary design project. And something that we included in the presentation was a breakdown of the decision-making process. In general for transportation projects. So that people understand that every transportation decision has to go through all these layers. Include including the board, including council, including all the documents that we have already set in place. So that people next time that they're engaged with the next transportation project, they they understand the structure of the decision. And we're also helping the community build its own capacity to step into leadership roles. And hopefully we get to have some of these communities participating in board and commissions, and maybe they'll be sitting at your seats next time.
We look, we look forward to that.
Thank you. I love the vision. And I'll just make my comment in close. Um so I just wanted to uh say I would love to attend if you do end up doing a brown bag to dig into any more of this, if there if there's appetite. And in that um sense, there are two topics I'd, if we can, would love to touch on. One is on more on this matter of. The missing middle and how how do we um, and I'm thinking one one example is parents with kids who are in school. Who do not have a lot of time to do these things. And I um I was really proud of the work that staff did with Iris. And um you know, I was feel like I was trying to shake trees at some of the schools, saying, hey, your parents wanna come out here and talk about this and. And um I know there was an incredible amount of work that was done to make that happen. Um in any case, um beyond what you can actually make happen with direct engagement, of course, there's a there's other ways to to get at that. So. I I'm very interested to um learn more, just learn more about how how we approach that. And then separately. Um our, I don't know if we have a policy or a plan on how we use social media. To to outward communications on emergency related um communications. Um how we choose to be where we are and that sort of thing, but I would love to have a discussion of that. It's appropriate at at such time.
And I would welcome not addressing that tonight, but parking it to address a potential lunch and learn.
Signaling my interest, yeah. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Alright, well, that wraps up our questions and comments, except that I'm just gonna say, um thanks so much to you all for being here. And for the extraordinary work. And Sarah, we've been on this path together for many years since twenty seventeen. And I remember the early days, we're kind of confused. We weren't sure where it was gonna go. And of course, there's always room for improvement, but oh my gosh, it's come so far. So thank you for all of your extraordinary work over all those years.
It's a great team. Thanks so much, Mayor.
Absolutely. So fantastic work, everyone. Uh really appreciate all of you. And with that, that's gonna wrap us up for tonight. I can see people's eyelids getting heavy, so I will go ahead and close this out and gavel us to a close here at eight fifty four PM.
Good night, everybody.